Call this meeting the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order, and we'd like to welcome everybody here. We're certainly glad you're here to address important things for the county. First thing, any announcements? Do we have any announcements that we claim our attention this time?
Just a couple, right? I think you have more than I have. This is a thank you for your thoughts and prayers and the beautiful plan you set. Graciously appreciate it from the office and the family. Let's make sure that the chairman, the commissioner, and the citizens and the county manager do their part.
We have a very nice note from Evelyn Southers thanking the commissioners and the county employees for the nice grant, wonderful reception that she was given. She said it was an awesome day, and she appreciates the kind words and all wishes, and that she loves us all.
One more, Mr. Chairman, just to remind everybody that Monday night is January 23rd, Cherokee, 6:30 PM, San Francisco Mission. So, the RPO meeting will start at 5:00, if they'd like to attend that, would be more than happy to do that, but it's 6:30 at Chestnut Tree in Cherokee's.
If we'd stay at this time, I'd like to tell you, gentlemen, let's join together for multiple sciences, focus our minds on important things of this meeting.
I bid the Commissions to declare the United States of America and due the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have two people signed up for public comment. If anybody else, please sit here for that time. We do have a public hearing scheduled now for 6 o'clock. It's just after 6:00 on the proposal Macon County Community Transportation Program Application. So, we'll do that this time.
Our presentation is intended for the chairman to give a brief overview of what is in the proposal for the application, and then a very brief summary of that.
What I am seeking tonight is for you to approve a resolution for Macon County to enter into the community transportation program grant application. We've been doing this for a number of years now. It must have been 15 years or more, so 15 years, I guess, we've been doing this. Basically, this is federal, state, and a portion of local funds. It's eighty percent federal, ten percent state, five percent state, ten percent, something like that. I think five fifteen. We got fifteen percent wherever the rest of it comes from. And what this does is provide funding for the administrative salaries, the administrative operations, the office space, and also school power bill and all that. And it also includes a capital request. There are certain criteria for capital that we have to meet. This year we'll only be asking to replace one big difference, one that has been the mileage. I say it's used a lot. There's also requests for a desk and some computer, a replacement computer extension. I am hoping to do a little bit of a restructure in the department, something how they're talking about just to move actually into the budget. It's a little difficult sometimes because I (laugh) you okay, everybody? Because sometimes I have to start planning right now. We don't move into the budgets even for a couple of months. So, that's what's included in this. The request is going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand for the insurance, and about fifty thousand, which is a ten percent amount of capital. So, that's what we asked for. We needed an approved resolution. Our president, the county manager, had an end of contract support.
The proposed resolutions, did you again the package, if there was one minor change, how you do it, to Mike after his death, before they go on this assignment?
Any questions to Kim for clarification? We have any public comment on the proposed resolution for Macon County Community Transportation Program Application?
Just for a point, this application is due by the end of the month, but we point at six, I think, of this month, and it will be available in the office Thursday or September 18th.
Any other questions, any public comment?
Should be item 10A. He isn't mine anymore.
We didn't have two type papers.
Greg, any other comments?
Twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty bucks.
And actually, what I had posted was an estimate in the back, and I think I had seventy-five thousand for the capital, and that's been reduced to about fifty thousand. So, that'll be five thousand.
Ten percent.
The ten percent on the capital, and then there's fifteen percent on that. It's one forty.
Should be about thirty-three thousand, at least.
Towed.
Thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yes, provided that, you know, through the revenue, we're going to. What we try to do is with our operational revenues, cover that cost, but basically just the same, that you are willing to provide that one.
Normally, your revenue cuts. We have to back it.
Typically, yes.
I knew there was something.
So, your total's about two forty. Is that right?
Yes, about, well, no, it could be about two hundred. About one fifty, and then another fifty. Because I think that says seventy-five thousand is what you're looking at, and that was an estimate because I had to get that memo in the paper, and whether it had been more than what the actual was. So, it was actually when I first did the data, it's right at fifty thousand. It's forty-nine thousand and some hundred, so.
Was that the one eighty-nine? What did you request, Kim? Did they fund the full amount too?
They have historically, yes. And basically, what that covered is my salary, or eighty-five percent of my salary, the office owner's salary, eighty-five percent of half of another salary, which is about thirty-five percent of the total salary.
We got the fund, that's good.
Yes, and it funds the branches that go along with that, like I said, power bill, light bill, dues, travel, just administrative.
It's a transient program, busy as now, it's healthy.
We see it rising on December. Typically, tends to be a rainy summer. So, it depends on how busy some of the agencies are as well. Gas prices will start to go back up. I did notice today that we have about a hundred and twenty trips scheduled for tomorrow. And that's, on good days, we usually run somewhere between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty. In December, we'll run anywhere from seventy to eighty because agencies are closed, it's cold, it's the holidays, and families here, you know, people just don't express that need. And I dare say, as spring moves forward, the gas prices will shut. There is a direct correlation to drivership.
And just to make sure, in the fiscal year that just ended, when we just got the autonoma, we covered this?
We did, and then some.
Well, that's.
And we took that reinvested it in the scheduling software that we were.
We can make it not a good.
You mentioned, have one more.
It's a replacement vehicle, because we felt one right now was kind of a hundred and forty thousand. And it's going to be another year before we see it. So, we'll have another probably between fifty and twenty-five.
Yeah, those are the best options we should have asked to hear.
It's in the capital portion.
Okay, so it will be included?
Yes. Yes, it's included in what I said came down to seventy-five.
Okay. Again, we've seen the resolution. Any other questions, any other comments? If not, we'll close the public hearing. A motion being ordered to approve the resolution. We have a motion, we have second? Got motion and second, in discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Now, we'll enter into our public comment period. We have two people that have signed up. First of all, we have Mr. Victor Drummond, and Vic is going to address the airport.
Evening all, and thank you very much for the opportunity. Under due business, the county manager is going to discuss funding of the local match for the airport parking apron grant. So, I wanted to make some general comments on airport and airport funding. I believe it is time for this board to take a careful look at continuing the expenditures on the airport. Federal and county taxpayers just spent 2.6 million on the runway extension. Federal, state, and county taxpayers will soon be spending around 2.5 million to replace the planes, plane parking paper. There's a project in the works to run a water line at the airport. I've seen estimates of in excess of a million dollars to do that. I've read that there are portions of the runway with cracks needing repairs, cost unknown. I've read that the airport authority has planes to widen the runway to fifty feet and build more hangars, cost unknown. Are there other projects in the works that county residents haven't heard about? How is the airport used? There are between thirty and forty aircraft based there. On average, there are twenty-five takeoff and landings per day. However, when the Franklin Press asked the airport manager for the operations per day count, he said he didn't keep a record. His usage metric is how many gallons of fuel he sold. Does the airport authority get a cut from those field sales? The airport authority doesn't charge a landing fee, so transient aircraft don't pay to use it. Is there a plan to make the airport self-supporting, or will this be a never-ending taxpayer expense? I'll be accused of being short-sighted and told the airport's going to bring economic development to the county, and it's good for the taxpayers. We may, sometime in the distant future, see our property tax rate go down because of that economic development. It's been over thirty years now without delivering on that dream. We are told in NC DOT's press releases and newspaper reports ad nauseam, quote, "The Macon County Airport has about an eight million dollar a year cumulative total impact on North Carolina and supports more than a hundred and twenty jobs based on a 2006 statewide economic impact study", end of quote. That didn't sound reasonable to me, so I tracked down this study, and I'll be happy to furnish the PDF file to anyone who hasn't read it. It is titled, quote, "Economic Impact of Public and Public-Owned General Aviation Airports in North Carolina", end of quote, and was written by Daniel Findley, a student at North Carolina State, as a thesis for his Master of Science in Civil Engineering degree. This economics study was written by a student in civil engineering, not economics. NC DOT's aviation division provided support, data, and apparently paid Mr. Findley for this work. Am I being overly cynical questioning the motives and results of this report? I challenge anyone to show our data to substantiate these numbers. It's mostly speculation and conjecture. The movers and shakers in Macon County obviously support the airport for whatever reasons, but county, state, and federal taxpayers are paying most of the bill, so a small number of residents get to use it. Show taxpayers proof, not economic development gibberish, how these millions of dollars are justified expenditures for the benefit of all county residents. There must be a public, long-range plan spelling out projected income expenditures and how the financial burden will be placed primarily on users and not non-user taxpayers. Otherwise, let's privatize the airport.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Vic. Second, we have Mr. Carl Golden, and Carl is going to speak about the discharge of weapons in Macon County.
Thank you, Jones, for letting me speak. I'm coming to you with a problem. I live out in Clark Chapel Community, and I have some neighbors who like to step outside their door and discharge weapons repeatedly. I've counted maybe forty, fifty rounds in a period of twenty minutes, and this is in a trailer park with homes right nearby. I live across the street, maybe a couple hundred yards away from these people, and I have on numerous occasions contacted the sheriff's department, and I've even spoken to the sheriff tonight about it, which he says his hands are tied, because there is nothing illegal about it. What I would like to propose, and I spoke to Mr. Hayden on this before, and he invited me to come here and speak to y'all, that I feel there needs to be a county ordinance against, you know, discharge weapons within somebody in the house. That way, therefore, it doesn't affect hunters, you know, which I don't have a problem with hunters. I don't have a problem with gun owners. I'm a gun owner, but I just see there's no need for this, and I think the county commission needs to do something about it, because it's just not safe.
Has this been going on, I mean, is this not, not just started?
This has been going on for a couple of years, and I'm sure, probably not the, you know, sheriff, I'm not sure, but I'm not the only community that's got this problem, or the only area that has this problem.
The issue is, if they were on somebody else's property, discharging the firearm so close to his residence, we could do something. The problem is that he has, is they're at their residence, and they have a legal right to discharge in a safe manner their firearms on their property, and that's what's happening. You know, that's why our hands are tied. There's nothing illegal about it, so we can't do anything about it. So, that's why.
You're saying he doesn't want to discharge in a safe manner, not to shoot?
And this goes on even to eleven o'clock at night.
If you ask a question, I'll get to the trailer park now. Is that where people own in-fitted law?
It's Lamar's Sprinkle Lot, I don't get that on Piedmont Road. I don't know the status of every single lot, but I think some are sold and some are leased. I'm not sure.
And the other thing, too, is when the officers, the officers will respond, and when they do respond, they'll go there, and a lot of times, and I don't know the specific of this situation, I just found out about this situation, but typically what they'll do is they'll explain to the officer, "Yeah, I shot, I shot forty-five times, and I shot into that bank right there, and you see that jug there, that's where I'm shooting, and it's in a safe manner, it's into a bank or whatever." It is in a safe manner.
I mean, I'm not upset with the sheriff's department. Every time I have called in the past, they've come out, you know, and, but if there's no law being broken, you know, it's just, it's not safe, you know. I think there needs to be, like, county ordinance. Isn't it illegal to discharge weapons in city limits?
There's a city ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I think county needs to have something like that. I mean, I'm not a lawmaker, so I don't know how the word is.
It sounds, you know, that's a whole (inaudible).
I understand that, but I feel it's worth looking into.
Before you leave, would you care to be sure and give the technical address?
I will be right.
We'd like to fill this.
Yeah.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The phone number we've got.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. That ends our, that ends our public comment period. Item number seven, we have adjustments and approval of the agenda. If board members would take a minute and look through the balance of the agenda, and see if there's any items you'd like to add, delete, or be in.
Mr. Chairman, there is one item that I'd like to ask to be deleted from the night to ten. That would be number twelve on the agenda, with two seats, and as you know, we have a work session on Saturday, and I think this is something to be discussed, or if it was going to be discussed again. And I would, I would thank you just for your advice for the phone appointments. I think it's taken.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend the planning board, I explained there January meeting until February, July, waiting on these two appointments.
Might be beneficial. I would defer, Mr. Chairman, if you have anything to say. All right. If there's no objection, we're going to remove item number twelve, or twelve A, the planning board, two seats. We'll delay that until our February meeting. Any other additions or additions?
We have a proposal, or leasing, or something, based on this, so county attorney and changes for, you know, (inaudible).
Changing primary. Where would you like to put that, Mr. Chairman?
Under New Business.
New Business, ten E? I'm sorry, ten.
We want you on.
Sorry.
Anywhere under New Business, or you can, it should take, but imagine if you do, I mean, the short items, so.
Okay.
You want to do it first, and then place it where you already actually know about it.
Okay.
It carries simply a resolution that the player across the surface approves.
Okay, we'll just make that under New Business, I can. Was there anything else to add?
I'm just going to, we have to put (inaudible).
It's, it's not on here, but that's a (inaudible) concern that the (inaudible) transfer of (inaudible) to the county. What makes me ask for that much of (inaudible) corporations and loans and government, also surveying, (inaudible) transition, also authorize a development of a business plan, or a sustained revenue (inaudible) after it's turned over to the county. That's not on the agenda yet. We did send that out after the agenda was prepared.
I mean, I'm just asking. So, that needs to be ten, we'll put that under ten J, under New Business, that'd be Cowie School. And I do have one item from Mr. Bill, myself, I think we're placing on the school system, Ron, do you want to repeat your name?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to add, I guess, under New Business, or that is considered agenda, we have a request from the athletic director of the high school, our meeting superintendent, about appropriating some monies to improve for safety purposes to grow a softball field, and we would like to put that on our contingent. Of course, our approval will be contingent on school approval also, which turns itself. We'd like to make, put that under New Business.
Okay, let's make that out of ten J, I'm sorry, ten K, that'd be the school, that's Macon Middle School Softball. And I would say that's a, normally is an issue to be discussed during the budget process. This was something that came to our attention mid-year. It's a safety issue to do with softballs going in the road, I think, in that area, caused a safety issue. So, we can rest and prepare a small amount, and we will discuss that. Anything, anything else to be added, or leave? Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second, the discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes. Number eight, we have reports and presentations. Eight A is up there on the smoking out in the center. We have Shelley Forman, the director.
Actually, if you can ask Brian, our director, to come forward and help.
Brian Will.
I hope you're not disappointed to hear from me, but Cheryl.
Just like.
Well, great to be here. We love Macon County. We love Commissioner Beal. He's a great asset to our board and does a great job for me.
You just shot your credibility right there.
I have to say it.
Frankly, it's true.
We have been very, very busy, and I'm sure the folks have read about the situation in our northern region with New River. It's been a very big challenge to be sure that the needs of folks in that part of our catchment area have been adequately dealt with, and I think we're getting to a little better point of stability with that. But really, the, you know, the overall, the biggest set of activities has to do with our preparation for becoming a managed care organization, a public sector managed care organization. And that is our pursuit of operation under the state Medicaid waiver, and that will be fulfilled by July 1st of this year, which will mean we will have responsibility for managing all the Medicaid funds that are used to reimburse providers for services to clients who are Medicaid eligible. And it really changes the scope of our activity by probably four or fivefold. The advantages to that is that it lets us organize care in a much more complete manner. Now, we really only manage the county and state funds, but with the waiver, we'll be managing all the funds that go to provide care for individuals that need the service. One of the biggest pieces about that that is a great benefit to counties and states has to do with the predictability that it creates around the Medicaid budget. And we will be operating as part of a reimbursement methodology, much like an insurance company, where we will have a capitated amount of money provided to deliver care. And Medicaid won't expand beyond that capitated amount. So, we go into each year knowing what that amount is, so that predictability is a, you know, a huge benefit for the state. You just think about the history that the state has had with its exposure to Medicaid for behavioral health services, and it's been, you know, not a good story. It's been gigantic overruns. So, this is one way to provide some assurance of maintaining a predictable Medicaid budget. You know, I could go on and on and on with this. It's a major, major change for the state. You know, I'm very happy to have had the board's support, and we have made progress on changing our culture and our infrastructure and our skill set with our staff now for a couple of years to be prepared for this, because we suspected this day would come, and we wanted to be sure that we would be successful at it. So, our planning phase has been very complete. We've worked with some of the top consultants really in the country to get us prepared, and, you know, it still is a lot of work, and in the long run, it's going to be, going to be better. And I believe that before it was even, you know, I think, an opportunity for (inaudible). What, what questions do you have? What do you hear about in the community? Have we done, you know, one of the challenges, and I always, this is kind of a disclaimer, it is really impossible for us to be able to address the public in as much thoroughness as we'd like to educate folks about this. And certainly, we've come here, and we've done different communities. And certainly, we've come here, and we've done different community and stakeholder meetings. Shelley's always involved with those activities and other staff. Like, there's so much to try to educate people about and explain the differences that, one of the things that we always urge people to do is to use our website, where we stay very current with information, not only about our own development, but about any changes that might be unfolding.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I think while there are many things happening at the state level and policy level, from our perspective, one of the most important things about becoming a public manager of Medicaid is our ability to be responsive to the communities we serve. And part of what we've been doing to help build people's knowledge of what the waiver is and what the impact will be for them is, even as we began to apply for the waiver, and now, at least every quarter, we've been posting a whole variety of information and educational sessions for local government. I put in your packet, sort of the first local government presentation we did, just to help give you all some background. We've been doing all kinds of meetings with consumers, families, with providers, and we really have a commitment to do that across our 15 counties, to make sure that people in the community understand what this is and how it will impact them and how we can still be locally responsive to needs.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say this is representative of this board to the LME. I mean, you can't say and explain what, what Smokey went through on this Medicaid waiver application. Forget the rest of it, just application. And, and I'm very happy to report that not only did Smokey come out well with the application that they have set the state standard in the Medicaid waiver process. This is the new world. As you know, the local association and county commissioner were very involved in the legislature, the language of this. I was happy to serve the chairman of the Health Human Services when that came about. And Smokey always supported us when it come down to counties would not be held liable, that language would be removed. Now we're talking about General Statute 122C. That's another big issue that we're really looking at as county commissioner. And that's what basically gesture in a layman's terms, that's what forms boards. And we want to make sure this LME board because, just speaking as a county commissioner, I said this at the meetings, and I think Smokey was back there, no matter what happens, it's the Medicaid waiver. Whatever happens, good or bad, we just like to admit when, when the mental health industry has failed, the last time they've thought of these things out, it comes back to the local board. Especially the local board always needs to be represented on the LME. Since LME is spanned, but I'm very happy to be associated with Smokey. They have now, if Rock Smokey back to where they need to use that, I have the one, two boards. And this is what requires local head of boards. And it, but also it gives us the local control. Very blessed in Macon County, Appalachian Services, I've got to give them, they've done a good job in Macon County. Robbie would certainly like to see the number hit zero, but that's not going to happen. But it has improved, and Robbie would hate it. With our walk-in center, our emergency services, and during the holidays, there were some problems that we discussed, as they always are. But, you know, when you have nowhere to send the patients, real problem, and that's where we're at. So if we can, more preventing, we can do, it's got to be on the local level. So, Mr. Chairman, I really think the Medicaid waiver is a thing in the future. The 122C part was to be taken up until November, which is in the, I don't know what kind of section they had. They got together, whatever they had.
Ninety-seven.
They got together eight or something. I don't know.
Short, tiny.
Short and tiny, but it was not. They did appoint another committee. We've asked to be a part of that committee in Raleigh. We continue to monitor that, because we really think that being a part and keeping the local board is a part of that, because it's, mental health continues to affect us. It continues to cost counties money. But Smokey has done a wonderful job of this, and we really thank him for his leadership and work before Shannon. And this board, it's 32 member board, it's beyond her cap. And so, but it's, it's a very complicated issue. You can read the stuff that's laid out here. But what we, what's really important, and what our board is focused on, if you, gentlemen, will turn to the six, page six, Brian, you have, you don't have a.
You know, but you tell me what we're asking about.
Here, you can have this page. I'll look up that to you. If you'll turn to page six, and this is what's always skeptical, Brian and Shelley, and on page six at the top, is the projected savings state by. These are numbers that we have questioned, and Robert has questioned, it's a local, and Brian has questioned. So we hope these numbers, these were not created from Smokey's number one. These were created by the Division Health. And we hope everything goes well, and we hope those numbers are true. But we want to make it perfectly clear, gentlemen, when you read the page, you read the agenda, those numbers are not created from our 15 county LME catchment area.
Keep pointing that out.
Plus a buy.
Well, we, we hope, we hope that that's a true number. But if, if we're going to save that kind of money, the Macon County would like to apply, Brian, for some extra monies that we cost us now, so. But as you read more about it, I, I can give you, I certainly can't give you a Medicaid waiver explanation like Brian or Shelley can, but I can tell you that this is, Mr. Norrell Counselor will tell you himself, that Smokey has never lost state by. So we're very proud of him. I'm very proud of him. And they've had a lot of people throw up on board, so. But we would ask Smokey, Brian, that on the 122C, it affects a lot of boards, have a head director here tonight, and our social services, it affects a lot of boards. And my only thing, we spoke today, the, the, the only thing we say is, no matter what happens, you know, ultimately, if this thing fails, it always ends up, it always ends up to the local taxpayers to pick up the slack, as it has for the past few years. So we would just ask that you continue to support, have local commissioners and local development team on, on LME, put us best support.
Well, I think one thing I would invite all of you to sort of hold close is that this is an incredible change, I mean, for Smokey as their LME, for people in the community, for the provider network. I mean, and anytime there's change, there will be challenges and difficulties, and things that maybe aren't perfect. And what we would invite you to do in all the agencies in this county, as well as all of our other counties, is to engage in conversation. I think that's part of the beauty of us managing Medicaid versus a value option, is that we do have staff, and we are available to have conversations about what's working and what's working well, and to help provide accurate and the best information about how things work for us.
It's our hope, gentlemen, that this will cut through some bureaucracy that if there is a need in Macon County, it might be different to our state. It gives us the options of presenting this to the Medicaid, and in that case, it can be made at the LME level. That Macon County has a wonderful program, but we can't give them money for Smokey. We would love to. And we think we can give an application, another Medicaid waiver now, through the bureaucracy, if we can meet those criteria. People cost us four times the money getting something done. So hopefully, a problem such as that, we have to find him to meet the criteria, but if he does lessen the bureaucracy on that end, help us with local control and that sort of thing.
Be a wonderful, wonderful proposal for the Evergreen Foundation, I think.
Yeah. That's another, that's another old story.
Well, we are going to be very involved in the work, the relationship, as Chris Reel said, around 122C, because of his position and other board members. And I spoke with our, my trade association, the council, Ivan, called Copeland, called last week, and talked with us about, you know, kind of where we were headed with this and how we could be involved. So, you know, given that we represent a large number of counties, people care what we have to say about this. So, you know, we'll be in a very good position to work this out to everybody's satisfaction. You know, we're in the, in the same foxhole with it, and we're not going anywhere.
The real problem has Haskell 916. Haskell 916 had the language that we wanted in, had the language we wanted. When it got ratified into resolution, the language disappeared. So we, we're a bit anxious about that, or we certainly are making, making that known, and hopefully, that will stay. So we appreciate it. We have a retreat coming in February, that, and I'll certainly call back to the board.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Shelley.
You need to keep this. Now, you, no, I never even bothered quoting those numbers. So I appreciate you for now that.
And we, we thank Commissioner Beal for his involvement in this, and he's very active at this, this end of the state, and we appreciate his, his continued.
He does, does a great job for the county.
We're not done. Next, we have the Macon County Community Foundation, United Gift Fund, Mr. Wheeze Henry. And Mr. Tom Ritter, please.
I certainly know better than to step on Wheeze's toe. There's some information on that.
If you just open it up, you'll see. I'll give you a little background. Carolina Community Foundation has been around for years, and Macon County Community Foundation, probably, we're best known for the plays that we do, but we make money from those plays and we give out grants. Swain County had come up with United Gift Fund, which is sort of like a little United Way just for our county. And as some of you know, you've been on the receiving list for a lot of women, for a lot of charities, Macon County was good to take care of some. So we've come up with this, and Swain County started theirs. They sent letters to all the non-residents, and they received a few thousand dollars back to them, and they started. What the United Gift Fund is will be just for Macon County, 100% of everything given will stay in this county. Any 501(c) legal, 501(c) can apply to us for grants. This is different than our regular grant, because with our regular grant, you have to say what you're going to do. What the North Carolina Foundation, they're set up to handle money, they're set up to, to, when we, when you put an application in for grants, you tell us what you want and how much you want. And then we come out to see, we go to, we have a committee, we go onsite to make sure that we're really there. We ask you to tell us, when you get the money, what you're going to do with it, and then we usually go back to see what you've done with it. So we feel like we can manage it very well, and like, we're trying to cover everyone and take pressure. The smaller businesses are the ones that get hit so much for money in the world. You know, if you're around town, you're going to have some kind of charity. So if you're 501(c), we can handle that. We also are set up to do payroll deduction. We will take any kind of money that we can get, that's donated, legal money, to, to put in like this United Gift Fund. We're hoping, we set a budget this year for 50,000, which is a little bit high for us to do, but as you can see on this list, we set up just a few, that they will get some money from us. And we're hoping that we can, number one, help the county out, help the people that need stuff, or money, I call it stuff, it's the same. And we're hoping we can be a help here, because we have it set up in the state, and we're set up here to handle it, and a committee. And I know I didn't explain everything to you, so ask me questions.
If I can add something to that, please. I'm here on the president of board, representing the Macon Community Foundation. This, as Wheeze said, is our 15 year. This is reviewing grants applications, giving out money to local nonprofits, is why we do every nickel that comes into our organization goes out, nothing pro-processes. The state of North Carolina, the North Carolina Community Foundation has got all that capacity to review organizations for their 501(c)(3) status and all that type of thing. What we've done, and we've also presented to the town, they are in a little bit different situation than you guys are, is that they give out their allocation, budgeted allocation for nonprofits, and they're, they can't have discussions internally as to how these go off, because every bit of that is public session. There are things that, we've been doing this for 20 years, not myself, but our group has, and we can offer a experience, we can offer a wide variety of opinions, we pride ourselves on our diversity of our board members. We have 15 board members, several of them are obviously on these committees and on these grant review committees. We look at these things, we determine the need that you're asking for, trying to find out what we have, how we can give it out. There's some discussions that you know you guys could not have sitting in this room, and it has to be in this room. And there are some very pointed discussions to make sure everything works. We're hoping to get to towns to help do that. We're offering to do that for yourselves as well, zero processing fees, we do that. We can obviously guarantee that we get a pot of money from the town, we get a pot of money from the general public, we get a pot of money from the county, if that's what it is. If all goes into a fund, we make sure that everybody gets the best we can, everything all you're looking for. There's a time when a question, not a month. The play that you're familiar with, the mystery dinner theater, is a different pocket of money, but that's usually for smaller guys that are asking for something very, very specific, that even then, we're not out of money. We do the play as often as we can do it, because we fool our, out of ourselves as best we can, and that's why we do it. The other thing that we do offer is, along with the experience and the, the diversity, is all of the town's money, of course, stays in the town's rent. There is not a nickel of the county money that can go anywhere else. We also do redo these applications, we follow up, we make sure that that money got used for what it was used for. For next year, we remember that, that, you know, when you came and got us last year, we make sure nobody double dips, through that type of thing, which is extremely, extremely important. The other thing, speaking from a small business owner, you know that there are fundraisers every week, there's charitable contributions everywhere. I get many, many calls looking, did they get it this pocket or this pocket? What we can do with that is, I give mine money, and I give money, that's my stock answer. I know that that money is going out, okay? That's the intent to the people that are here. We've got a long list of people, we'd love to have that list of people, why is it candidate? But I know every nickel that I don't, went where it's intended to go, and that's something we'd like to offer to, to the county as well as the town, and everybody else, anybody that's willing to be able to help with that, that's a lot of work.
Louis, did you have a bunch of communities on the phone with Joe?
We haven't yet, because we, we're going to do some, we're going to do it first. I mean, but we're going to. I have, since I started this, I've talked to every club, every community, if you were in the Franklin presence, I called to speak to your group. So everybody, let me speak, I've spoken to them, and I still have a lot of clubs and pool offices and that. And I'd like for everybody, and the businesses, and some businesses you can get through, some you can't. You're on the side of red, so get an action for guys out there, okay? I mean, and this, and people don't realize that. And it's, sometimes it's not fair. I've kept with a lot of benefits, and here's somebody who'll leave money, and they'll give $30,000. And somebody here's just a sick and has to drive just his car, and you give $600,000, and they can take three people to the U of U six months, can't you prove? So the thing is, it's just a big need in the county, and we try to really keep it fair and see that everybody gets it. But businesses, especially people in town, are really stubborn, and they want to give. I mean, they really want to give, and they hate anyone. We're also going to offer payroll deduction. And there's one more thing about this, if you have something on that 501(c) and because of your denomination or your waiver term, you can designate where your money goes to. So there's no excuse for anyone. If you say, well, the Methodist is going to get money, and your Baptist, you can give it to the Baptist, I mean, whichever way you want to do it. We try to set it up, and North Carolina Foundation is talking, I've been on a lot of boards, I've been around a lot of people, they talk to this, and that, I think, my best thing. So I'm sort of pretty much, I think it's great, Constance would have a better job than me.
Louis, you know, you got it off the ground, this thing was left, and you got it wrong. We know, a lot of.
But we'd like to discuss it and keep this in mind, because we'd like to do a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate what you do. I'd like to recognize, Commissioner Beal, we have, I'll let you know, we've been working at the board, we've been very much behind this, Dallas Center in Macon County, we have some updates on that information, we'd like to share some, Commissioner Beal, if you would.
Really briefly, Mr. Chairman, we did get, where the council, the governor did sign off on the, on the council's suggestions and the vision of Health Human Services. As you know, we've had a real special request, called a need adjustment. That adjustment was made. That adjustment was made at the count at the end of the year. Macon County didn't qualify for a minimum of seven dialysis stations. So we're well on the way. Attorney Jones has been very instrumental as the county manager helping with this. We'll start on our certificate of need. It is due March fifteenth. If that's the proper date, from March sixteenth, Chester. And we will be working on this next week. I suppose we'll be in town to assist us with that. We think we'll have, we've already made a request to the division that we have an expedited certificate of need because we think the need is that great. The need continues to grow. We continue to be contacted. There are a lot of folks in our community who are now level four or stage four. And that's just the next, the next step is dialysis. I think that is just now at the level of our folks, our neighbor, our neighbor, friends, our county. What we always suspected of being the county, that that we ended up with seven stations. So next week, we'll begin with the county attorney and county manager. And we will have some folks coming in to assist us with the certificate of need. And we've ensured by division that our certificate of need will be expedited when we claim that request in writing and in person. We will continue to do that. So anything you'd like to add, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think it's just real quick for what we all understand. March fifteenth is the absolute deadline for the process on the town. Issues with that application?
And I do want to report this. A doctor that's sitting on the council, a member of actually the vice chair of county, is Dr. Pessin Patel. You've never heard of Dr. Patel? Neither have I until I went there, a meeting they had. But he requested, and I sent, so my presentation of this board to him. He made that presentation Saturday, several hundred people in Raleigh, including the governor. And we've got to report back to him that everything is well received. So it shows you that when a board works together, Mr. Chairman, and goes in the same direction, it's good things for our folks. And this dialysis center, not only will it be a great benefit to the folks who need it, they're still driving across that mountain every morning at four o'clock. Last Monday, when we was asleep, you don't know that day. Well, they still had to be there. You know, there's no, they had, there's no choice. So we're really excited about this. Hope our certification of need goes well, maybe will. We have one for attorney, Chef Jones, who we're working on the county manager. And we'll be having assistance from, from folks from Raleigh. So if anybody has any questions, we'll sort of try to answer them. But this is for the folks who need that. It could be part of our family next week. So so everything's looking very positive at the time.
Thank you, Brian. Great condition there in county and appreciate this board's involvement. As Brian said, we all go in the same direction. Thank you for that. So y'all, yes. Very briefly, I'll mention under item eight D, one of the jobs the chairman is to assign board members who need to serve as liaisons on different committees. And all of you know, the ex, well, and Governor Commissioner Tate, we do some reassignment. And I talk to each of the commissioners individually. We have a copy of that. Mr. Tate, do you have a copy of that for immediate vote? It's in there. They've got it. Okay. And you'll see that different commissioners have been assigned to different committees. I would mention a couple of things. There are changes. Commissioner Tate will be with the EMS and the fire commission both, as we've talked about, and he's agreed to do that. Appreciate Commissioner Haver volunteer to let Commissioner Tate do that. He's had experience in that area. Also, Mr. Button, we're appointing Mr. Covers to be on your helpful, and I think he'll do a great job with that. We have created two, two new liaison positions that we felt like was necessary. LBJ has always been a very important part of our community. I think Mr. Beal took some work, seventy nine million dollars a year in their local economy. And so we felt like we needed a liaison to that, that center of affairs and not only know what they're going, what's going on there, if they didn't know what's going on in the county. And so that's Commissioner Beal, if he would serve in that capacity, he's agreed to do that. Another new liaison position is the library. The county manager, former state, would like to have liaisons. So that's Commissioner Covers to do that. That's a new position. And then also a change would be with the planning board. As you know, Commissioner Tate was on the planning board. And since he came on, the commission, the top of the commission coverage was our liaison to that board. We talked about that. He was agreeing that Commissioner Tate should be the liaison to the planning board beginning this month. So Commissioner Tate will be in there at that next meeting. And the rest of them will go through these with their pretty, pretty clear, who serve in which board. That is for you to communicate with us and the rest to communicate with you as well. So that's what we're doing. We're thankful to do that. I remember nine in our old business, that was a senior in our old business. Under new business, the regional transformation, we've already done that. Can we already bring that to you? So we're doing that. Ten B, the regional transformation grant application.
Good evening. I'm here to request a letter of support and the work commissioners for what's called a regional transformation grant related to public health activities. And for me, Macon County to be the lead county, this is a regional grant. Right now, the state puts about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year into the far west counties. Macon, Clay, Cherokee, Graham, Swain, Jackson, Haywood, and Transylvania. And that money is going to be no more effective than anybody. Our monies for health promotion or venture are going to come instead of directly from the feds to the state, to the locals. We're grant processing now from the federal government to the state that receives the grant, or the states that receive the grant. And then it's a grant process for, and they are pushing us to do it regionally, those funds. They've divided the state up, or the state's been divided up for many years into ten public health regions. Each public health region is going to get about four hundred thousand dollars to be distributed among those counties. They do have specific strategic objectives that they want us to target. There's about eight. As a region, we have to pick four of the four. We have to have an individual county, at least one of the eight counties working on that specific objective. We've kind of paired our counties up. Macon, Clay, Cherokee, Graham, Swain, and Jackson, Transylvania, and Haywood as our four kind of priority areas. We have not decided what, which one is going to work on which priority as yet. And we haven't put the action plans together for that. Those are not due until March or April. The grant will actually start in March of this year and run through June. And we'll get a partial, receive some funding. The full year is four hundred thousand dollars, which will be next year for the region, which is more than double what we currently get health promotion money now. It used to be we got a pretty significant amount of money. Macon got about between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars. Last year, we got eleven because of budget cuts to the state. Next year, we're going to get none of that health promotion money. So the grant is going to benefit us all. What I need is a letter of support and willingness to the county commission and county manager and along with myself, accept responsibility as the lead county to distribute those funds to other counties. It would mean that we would have to hire a coordinator in Macon. It could be a new physician. And Jackson would also hire a coordinator as a new physician. We've all decided, all eight of us have decided that we would try and use the money to continue funding the physicians that we will probably lose because of promotion cuts next year. And, and focus on trying to keep those people employed. And, but it's only one new position. It's not going to involve any county money, any new county money, or any county money at all for the grant itself. We'd have to hire, as I said, the project coordinator or supervisor. We'd be responsible for fiscal monitoring. They won't let us, or they, they, basically the feds have said there's no administrative fees that we can charge to the grant. But they are allowing us to, to do some contracting for the fiscal component so that the burden doesn't lie with our county finance staff. Though the county finance staff will still have to process and cut checks in the future. We are going to ask for memoranda for understanding if we take the lead and be the lead county. And from each of the individual counties, that will be signed not only by the health director, but the county manager and county commissioners. Because in the end, if somebody overspends, Macon County don't want to be left on the hook for that. And, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell. There are a lot of, any questions, all answers are questions related to that. Letter of support I need to get in. The whole grant application is due around the twentieth of this month.
How much, roughly, how many, always to me, a year?
In the, we just finally got a final draft of the grant today. Actually, I did the final draft of the grant budget today and have not passed it back out to the health directors, but after our meeting yesterday, draft today. It's about a total of a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for Macon. The position itself will cost somewhere around twenty-nine thousand dollars plus fringe, which is about another ten, eleven thousand dollars. And for the coordinator position. And then we'll get a halftime position, which is somewhere around twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars that we would have to contract or to continue employing them in existing county correction. And then there's some operating funds and some media funds. As the lead county, the first year between now and June, when we put the budget together for that, we're only going to look at hiring coordinators except for that last month of the year because we have a faulty budget here compared to the county or state budget here. Public health starts the first of June, not the first of July. So it complicates things a little bit for us. So that is our person.
Planning right there.
Yeah, I'm telling, no, this has been going on since the nineteen.
I know, I just.
And, but, so we will, our first budget year, first month of the budget year is June. So we'll have to factor some of that in for staffing and to begin the process of hiring or continuing to employ some of the staff that we have in all of the counties.
The day the grant is free, but the people aren't to the county.
No, at the end of the day, the grant is free and those people that we're going to lose funding for, that was either partial county money or.
That comes out of the grant. That comes out of the grant.
The coordinator, that comes out of the, that comes out of the grant.
That comes out of the grant.
Grand coordinator comes out of the grant.
Do we have a person that can do that here without hiring new people? Will we make a lateral transfer? The way it looks, you're going to lose a position.
We're going to, well, we're going to lose eleven thousand dollars. So we're going to lose a piece of the position, basically. We're going to lose about twenty percent of the position.
And along with that, while you're thinking about answering that question, the one that will come, will she be, who's the employee of that thing?
The coordinator, it'll be, it'll be.
So she'll come up to Macon County.
They'll work the grant here. The grant, and hires, grant.
Or each one I'm going to get to is her FICA and her everything, her insurance, everything comes out of the grant?
Comes out of the grant.
That's the way, that's the way it's coming back.
It's, everything's in there. We, we're covering salary, Medicare, FICA, hospitalization, life insurance, retirement, 401(k) on every position, plus.
All you're looking for from us is to go get.
All I need is, well, two things really. You don't want to go in this with blunder.
That's.
We would, we would be the lead county in this. So we would be taking responsibility for the entire four hundred thousand dollar grant. Distribution of those funds to the other seven, eight, seven counties.
We'd just be a pastor.
We'd be a pastor.
Okay.
But there's a lot, the reason they're allowing to do the fiscal component is there's a lot of reporting that goes along with that. It's a lot different than, than what we, normally when we do invoices, we process them, we send them through county finance. We're going to have to copy every invoice and report absolutely everything we purchase, every minute that anybody spends on the grant, all that's going to report it to the state. And that all falls for that coordinator. Correct. And it cannot, and that cannot be an existing employee. Again, we can look at that, or his staff. So it makes it a little more complicated.
The lawyer would handle the finances.
Correct.
As far as the chance. But as far as the financial reporting, the way I'm hearing it, that's coming from.
It would come from the coordinator.
That's true.
And while it'll be from whoever this fiscal person is.
Whoever that is that you hired. But would they love the person here?
Yes. This is, this is one new job in the county.
Would it be the lead county for what, one year, Jim, two years?
The grant is, is a, it's a five-year grant contingent of each continuation year after the first year contingent of the results that you achieve.
That you achieve in the grant.
And so the potential is two million dollars for the region. That's pretty good.
So by my, we'd be the lead county first.
We'd be the, the manager and I have talked, we'll be the lead county as long as the other counties go up the bridge. There's no county money in this whatsoever. The money that we're going to lose from the state for health promotion is what this is going to replace a portion of that.
We're going to be a part of this, Jim. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to choose that, but I'm going to be the lead county. I mean, I really, you know, I think like any other partnership, everyone's money's at, I think that goes a part of it. I think that's fine.
Everybody's okay. What, what we need to do is approve this letter of support.
You have the letter of support. You should have a copy of the letter of support or something.
Please, I want to. I think, you know, it's, it's, it's free to us and I'm a view of, I've got to be in the belt and I'd like to be in the front.
That's right.
So I, I would agree. All we're really saying is, I'd like.
Go ahead, Mike. Okay. Have you approved that letter?
We have motion in the second. Need discussion? Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add here?
The only thing I'd say is that one, two counties, although eight, that's a state that's leading on this, this place in county, though Jackson County says we want to deal with the financial part of that. I think it's a county decision to be respected, lead on that. We can talk about that. If we can do that, as Jim said, our discussion was, we'll do it on, 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 and so somewhat during the process, what might this go to change? And we are, but, but the county will, we'll.
And there is some supervision money built in there that we can use to draw down against money, salary. A lot of that can be crossed up.
Most important thing to say there is that we're going to employ each other. I think there are pretty good questions. And the mayor may not know yet, did they indicate when they wanted, in order of understanding or interlocal agreements at once?
We have, they have not, it's not in our RFA, but in the conversations that we've had with the state in preparing our applications, which we have done, by the way, it's ready to go. But they have indicated that by March first, they want us to have what they call our action plans in place. Which means that before I can, before, and all the health directors understand, if I don't have a letter applied by the county manager and their board of county commissioners, we're not distributing the money. And that money will roll back to the state at the end of the year. We've, I've tried to make that as absolute, as crystal clear as I can and take, and assume the lead for us.
And the second item, I guess, is, is either the federal government or the state government providing an attempt for whatever intermodal agreement that they expect to see, or are they willing to come up with that?
They, they have, as with anything with the state, no. We've asked for that. We doubt we'll see that. We'll probably have to be coming up with our own.
So do we know when that might be due?
It'll, we'll have to have them.
That is going to be quite an.
We'll have to have them done by the first, before any funds are distributed. And what we're trying to do, one of the things that we're trying to do is in the first portion of the year, between now and July, because we will get money in March, is do things like buy the computers for each of the counties. And we would be the lead. We would buy those computers and we would pass those on to those counties once they sign the one year. Jackson County is probably the only county that will actually have to have one in place with, if we distribute funds to them between now and July first. Because they are hiring the second coordinator, basically. And we've divided the region up. Jackson, Swain, Haywood, Jackson, Swain, Haywood, and Transylvania with one coordinator. And then Macon West with the other coordinator. And I think we'll probably come out on the better end of the other end because we're population wise a little smaller. Jackson would probably be the only one we have to get in place pretty quickly.
Can you have discussion? We have motion in the second. All in favor of the motion, second time, the same, I, I, most, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Do you want to know if we'd be, can I, if you can answer, if we'd be, if everybody's approved, we'll want to take care of it right away. Therefore, finish up page one, do the paperwork, do the paperwork. Okay, right away, bring the due.
Yeah. Everything started working off that discovery, well, heights were one of their goals, so high they had to have a, they had to have a God wire factory and reach outside of that area. So they needed an acre and so, so they got, they got the package request to expand right away fourteen thousand seven acres. This is about six hundred square feet. That'll work for them to have a place to put their God wire, to have the poles high in the vision in this. And there's, there's, there's no reason, there's no, there's no reason not to allow to do that because we can see the interference and they, you know.
Little key next.
There's a little map up there, Jen, the package, and it's, I believe, it's in there.
It's on there, yes.
It shows you a little diagram of that.
It's a little, it's a little rectangle here, just outside.
If you want to see where it is, I do have some extra copies, some aerial photographs showing the area that the county owns over there. I think everybody's heard that before.
Mr. Chairman, if everybody's in, happy with that huge amount of property, at least I'll make a motion that we accept.
Exactly just these, it's all the days.
Oh, we should have looked at that, we should have priced them.
With the same people, same activity, same, did I say?
We grant this season with a few, our, go ahead and move the, the stabilizing part out of the year for.
You have a second motion? You have a motion in the second to grant that, what we call that needsment, Chester. Any discussion on that? All in favor, signal by the same eye.
Eye.
Motion, that motion passing. Out of T and D is the funding for local management on the airport payment project. I think Jack has the particulars, perhaps this, we're supposed to be with.
We do have the chairman of the airport, probably, to answer some questions that they have, so we can agree. I'll give you a pretty full review. Just notified just recently that general aviation, uh, the transportation, they announced that the county was, the airport division was approved for grants or payments for routes around the airport. Roads are fifteen dollars and out of that, that's, when the federal aviation administration grants are all eighty percent grants, state within that, and local within that plan. And so, uh, it's unusual, I guess, the state having to grant that large for a county our size, but I think it causes the hard work of the airport authority and somebody put a branch in, or a branch of that. I think we'll see the need to, to bring that, to take up, up, up the date. Some of them have been there for probably decades, hasn't, hasn't been, hasn't been repaired just the way it is. They can be repaired, the caveat, I guess, is to a county, the past county has been, put up the tent, that match on all major airport improvements. This would be a, a match of, uh, something to, uh, thirty thousand, it's not thirty-four dollars. And as that was not a budget item, we're going to go ahead and make that grant available, that match available, that fifteen dollar grant, direct to man, that the budget number will be included, that would make that, uh, it's a designated one thousand. And Mr. Gregory is very, very with it, and for the authorities down there, we'll probably, if you don't have any questions, I'm sure he will, hold on that thing.
Mr. Gregory, could you just give us a little background about how this came about, what the process, who, who asked for this money, where it come from, who agreed with that kind of budget?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, let me wish all of you a very happy new year. I wanted to help you. We appreciate you, y'all's work, what you're doing here, for making the county, your dedication. And the way you work together, that's the way you get things done, and y'all have been very, very progressive and working together, and thank you, a lot of times having you back down. And we appreciate them. And let me also say that, that the last time I was up here, I just think a while ago, I sat right here, and another gentleman sat beside us. I don't know his name.
I remember well, we did. Me and Bobby covers all the ones from here.
Anyway, the fellow that was, was the rest of the commissioners, dressed us down pretty good. So when he got through making his comments, he walked right by me and this fellow sat beside of me. And the fellow sat beside of me, he said, "You're crazy as hell." The man, one round looked at me and said, "What'd you say?" I said, "What me, I didn't say." But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to be here on behalf of the airport authority, and, and we're making, we're making a lot of progress at the airport, and we, we feel like the airport is so very, very important to this county. Regardless of what some may feel, they have a right to their opinion. But I've born raised here in Macon County, I've been in business here for forty-two years, and I realize how important this airport is. There are seventy-six airports in North Carolina. And there's twenty-four counties that do not have an airport. And I'm sure you could ask these counties if they'd like to have an airport. And guess what, you'd get a hundred percent reply, "Yes, we'd like to have one." So we're very fortunate that our forefathers, uh, that preceded us had a vision to see that we needed an airport here in, in Macon County. We lost our railroad, we had a railroad to come in here, and nobody was standing up fight for it. We lost, we lost that infrastructure for Macon County. So this is the only thing we can really rely on, is our airport now for economic growth. And if people don't think it's so important for this county, go up to Highlands and see how many big homes up there that, that's, that's, from two million up to twenty-five million dollars. These homes help keep our tax base high. And helps keep our tax rate, let me emphasize rate, keeps our tax rate low. And it benefits all of us. We have a big plane that comes in, a big jet plane, it's foul, comes in quite frequently to the airport. And Ms. Woodrow comes in here with this airport. She's got a twenty-eight thousand structure home in Allen. And she pays a lot of taxes, I think it's something like close to thirty thousand dollars a year for Macon County on taxes. So it's, I could go on, I don't want to get, you know, think some people about all the benefits, but this gentleman spoke earlier, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with him anytime and try to convince him how important this airport is to Macon County, maybe answer some of his questions. And I'll do that tonight, we don't have time. But anyway, we, we have to give a, what they call a TIP, that's Transportation Improvement Project, a request to Department of Transportation every year. This page that we had to give, we had to give this request to the, to Department of Transportation. That was a ten-year projection of projects that we would be getting involved in at the Macon County Airport. So this, we've got several improvements made around the airport, and I'd be happy to go with them if we had the time, we don't. Uh, we've made a lot of progress in the last five, six, eight years at the airport. We've done a lot of improvements down there, but we're trying our best to bring it up to standard. And this grant that we applied for in this TIP had to do with improving the ramp area. And also, we got, we got to improve the runway, it's in bad shape as well. So the first project they prioritized, DOT did, Department of Transportation did this, they, they prioritized this project for us. We have to improve the ramp area because it's all pieces. And it's going to be very expensive to, to, to do this project because we got to take all the asphalt up, it's there now. Put out a new base, and then, and then asphalt, all the type, so it's going to be very expensive. So if there's any money, actually we went out to bid, if there's any money left over from this project, hopefully we can use that money to resurface the runway. And hopefully we could, we're going to be able to provide twenty-five feet on either side, let's be fifty feet, make it easier for the pilots to land on, on the runway. So this is one of the things that, that we feel like is very important, that will help us bring our, our airport up to standard. And so that's why we asked for this grant, and we were very fortunate to get this money. Because there's, there's a lot of airports that's, across the state and all kind of stuff, want money to do things, their airports as well. So we had a fellow that came to visit us back, I think back in October, running through, and, and, yeah.
Secretary of.
Secretary of the DOT. And we looked at the condition of the ramp area, he kind of shook his head. And we asked him then, said, you know, "Can you help us, you know, improve this situation we got here with the runway? Ground grass has grown up all over the work, and we was using all around it, we can get a hold of it, try to hit it, but we're still having problems keeping up the control." So he just shook his head, got it pat out, brought it down, and all he said was, "I'll see what I can do." And so I think he, I think he had something to do with us getting this grant. So I'm here now on behalf of the airport authority. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come and make this request to you, to make some money for this grant so we can go ahead, soon as warm weather comes, we'll bring you this one, on the runway.
Mr. Gregory, we got a, got an email from the citizens, so I'm, I'm just going to ask you a question.
Sure.
I may have been made that maybe some cleanup can do, redone, maybe do sort of a, I can't remember the word.
Cap.
A cap or, or a ceiling type thing, and that can be done for about fifty thousand dollars instead of two feet. That seems a big difference in money, if you could fix it for fifty thousand. Would you do that, I mean, what's the.
If we can do it for fifty thousand, I'd be all for it. But our engineer, along with Department of Transportation, have looked at it closely. They've examined it, and of course, I'm not an engineer, but, but I've got a fellow that's here, sitting right back here, that probably knows much about that sort of thing, so maybe he hears that. I'm going to ask him what has to be done, then after that, with the conditions in, Richard Rhodes.
Richard. Richard Rhodes is owner of Rhodes Brothers, hey, we have local company, and it employs sixty to eighty people in Macon County, so, but, but that, I kind of, this is, this is business on, we might just pay it all every Friday, and we've got most of the batteries stolen last week.
No, all of them.
All of them. But, uh, it's like, this is a local businessman that, while we're thinking about this, he is a paid business, we certainly hope that he wrote to be a part of this project, if he decides to go.
First of all, I'd like to take a question for this opportunity to say something. Really, the seal coating ramp or two patches, it just doesn't go back to the wood, to be honest. The ramp has got so many cracks in there and such that the whole age, it's not, I would be there now, and a void now is getting damaged, the base, which is going to destroy the base before long. It's going to cost the county a lot right now. So the engineers are right, you're going to have to mill it, take it up, start from the bottom down. With the traffic we got in coming into the airport, now, I'm also a pilot, so I see a lot of the traffic coming in to Macon County. You go out there on the weekends, especially sometimes, there'll be a lot of jets, ramps, full of the jets out there. And the weight of these jets and everything, it's a little, it's heavy, being paved, and it's going to have to be put in there.
So you're saying if you, if you did this cap, they could run.
You'd have reflective crack and coming back in within here. We have what we call a blanket crack, and you just do a cap on top of it, we have a blanket crack, and it is going to come back to the surface, obviously, and.
So this process would be taking up everything that's there with necessary.
You mean looking basically at the brandy weight?
Uh, yes. When, when was that put down, Mr. Chairman?
This, I can remember, Mr. Chairman, it was about nineteen seventy.
He thinks, he thinks, I think that we don't turn it all over, look, is that, now that the extended runway, we had, we couldn't do, you know, I would think, the airport authority, the miles, we couldn't speak. Now that we have extended runway, we can have bigger, heavier jets land.
That's correct.
Just like Secretary of Commerce, you know, when he looked at the new runway, he said, "Can they drive up here? Can they drive on the tarp?" No. He just thought, "Ah."
Well, it's a safety hazard. There's a safety issue going on.
One way it's a safety aspect is, you know, when this starts chunking up, the chunks start coming up. A jet comes in there on its intake, it can pull a, a chunk of asphalt in to the, the large engines, and it costs a lot of thousands of dollars. Also, small prop airplane, you know, you got, you get a prop strike, you know, which if you go back and you fix up a chunk of asphalt, you have to send that engine off and have it certified to crank and everything, because it costs a lot of money to take it, just to put it in prop. So there are a lot of hazards out there, especially if you hit one, a hole or something like that, and you can let some nose gear up, or bust it for you.
And we hear your comment earlier, "Well, in thirty years, where can you show that this airport has been beneficial?" Mr. Chairman, I think somebody made that comment. Well, I can tell you this, that if you look back in history, there was two options. One county took their money and built a golf course. One county took their money and built Macon County Airport. We did have some visionaries, we built our airport. And has it been slow, but, but who'd ever dreamed that we would have now where you could land jets, not where we're landing now, but we have folks in Highlands who own multiple, multiple families who own jets that they had huge tax evasion, they had jets to be part of, for Macon County. So I think the airport is just another step in the growth of Macon County, and thirty years ain't long if you don't take real quick miles. But I think the airport authority's done a wonderful job in, in going after this, and you, Mr. Chairman, and the other folks at the authority, and I'll be if y'all, I don't know, I don't know, but I can. But thanks, Joe, y'all, that's all I need to say.
Mr. Gregory, I think too, I was out there at the airport, probably walked there all the way, I think on the road down there. I'll stay a fly on today, helping to, I can't remember your name, but I, and I got to say too, I was trying to look, see if I could find, wait to say caller, asking a bunch of questions. I'm concerned with the safety, I don't know what kind of risk. I'm not a builder or anything like that, but I own a, a property, I think I paid, and you want to tell the truth, I know what, what you're saying. There's one big concern, I really got to face somewhere, put it together that we can keep that money in this county. The work, it's going to take a little bit, it's, anyway, we can do that, and it can kill.
I, I understand, uh, for the mission where you're coming from, we have to go with God on our own.
And, and already, and we already questioned that, okay, so. I don't, I, I, anyway.
You have to, you have to, you have to.
I'd love to see it, oh, I questioned all that today. I, I hate to, for us to turn away from that window, but I ain't quite as tired as Ford was about that. I believe the same in any of Kent, but I do see a good benefit. The day we were in Highlands, when the light very open, remember all the guys back there questioning me when the airport will be open? And I know that you went first, but I didn't love the date, there was all that led to the planes in there. I appreciate it, so I went down there one day that, that we had, all the people gathered, who first, so it's a fine job.
And we do look forward, just for the citizens' sake, and we do look forward to the day that the authority can stand on its own.
That, that day is coming, and we've been working very hard toward that, toward that day, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, of course, now we're bound by at least, that was signed eighteen, fifteen years ago, but, but hopefully, before another six years, we'll be able to maybe make some changes and medical product will do as far as, is it being self-sufficient.
Just, just as a technical commissioner head off, put a consumer hat on, at what point would, would our airport be able to say, handle commuter traffic, let's say connecting a small flight to Atlanta or to Ashland? To, so if we could get some of the companies, Delta, American, United, to schedule some of their, what I look terminology.
When MedJet lands every Sunday, MedJet lands every Sunday, it looks like he's fourteen thousand flights, that's all he can be.
Of course, that one, I take some patience.
Uh, we're getting a lot of, since the extension runway has been opened, we get now five thousand feet of runway, but we're getting a lot of charter bids on the jet track that's going in. Our FBO, I discussed with David Kim last, last week, and his work in paper, much paper, really, but, he said the fuels sales were up by fifteen percent since May one of this, this past year. So that's a considerable increase, and, and, and airport authority gets some of that money.
I think, that's good. Mr. Brown mentioned that he, he counted the sales, I think he, he doesn't get paid on any people take off and anything.
That's, that's true.
He counts that as a good price.
I think that might be a good point, that fixed base operator could maybe keep a little bit better records. But why they do this part?
We are, we're suggesting, we're suggesting to him.
And it would be nice for us to see that, having, having. And it would be nice for us to see that, having, having.
I would strongly suggest that, and I think the work, and ask the authorities that we have to. He's been very good to work with us, and just a matter of asking to do it, we really see the need for it.
I think at this point, I can give you information.
Sure.
I basically agree with you, with the different types and volume of traffic, you know, we could, we could get information to handle.
Mr. Gregor, I have a question, too. And this might be as much of the information that was made, because I'm on the other side. Trying to get my feet in here, is there a timeline? You got to have it in next week, next month?
Let me say yes, no. We're, they did not get, we got a letter from, from the governor's office that they had approved this grant. The letter did not say that we had a certain amount of time to accept your offer, but. Having been involved in it over a number of years, in fact, I have been chairman of our authority now about soon be ninety. And I've worked with all our authority, and been the greatest people I've ever worked with. We've all been on the same page, in fact, I've met somebody here, one back, I think, we only had two votes that were split votes, and that was over, over two. So we all, we all have one golden mind in that stew. Make that airport the very best airport that we can make in here in Macon. I know, and I'm convinced, and I'm seventy-six-year-old now, so I'm too old for anybody to try to pinch me otherwise. Because I've been, I've been through it, and I know that this is the greatest asset for Macon County right now for economic development, that we have, for infrastructure. And it's gonna pay off, and I'll tell you, I've put my, I've put my neck on the chopping block, because it's gonna pay off in Macon now. You wait and see, market, my dad used to stand on that board, market down in the bay area. So this, this is certainly very important.
You're leading the exact rundown of this, the reason why it's got a timeline.
And I don't know, how many of the surrounding counties use our airport?
Well, Jackson, when they have some dignitaries come in to Western Carolina, they freight land on that thirty-two-hundred-foot runway where Jackson County on top of the mountain, so they come and freight them. We have, we have Swain County using, and we have some people that landed here about three weeks ago, we went to Paris, and two helicopter, big helicopter, use our airport here. I was down there one day when a big jet came in, and a family got off, the two kids, and pilot, pro-pilot came in there and sat down, and I said, "I need to find out what this fellow, why, why are they here?" So a car came and got the family and took off. I said, "I introduced myself to them," I said, "You know, where you from?" He said, "They're from the Virgin Islands." I said, "What in the world are you doing here in Macon County?" He said, "We brought these kids up, he's going down here to school here at..."
Redmond Gap.
Redmond Gap School. They come down there, I said, "I'm gonna wait till they come back." I mean, it blew me out, it blew me out, I shoot. So this airport is, is used a lot more than people realize.
You got, or I'm leading with this, and the county may already tried this before. You've got a hope, you've got a great asset. But it's also a great asset for the surrounding counties, so is there an opportunity to ask for that, or something surrounding counties?
Right, city against five families with runway.
Here's the problem with that. Excuse me for interrupting.
No, no, I won't.
I won't, I won't give you the downside of that. Once you get these other counties involved in, in a monetary way, they gonna, they gonna be trying to control how we, how it's run, so on and so on. So that, I would be, be careful about that, being up county, we want to keep total control there. But another example, I hope I'm not taking too much time, Richard, if you don't mind.
No.
You're doing all right.
Yes, you're doing fine.
About a year ago, Ray Stevens came here, you remember, any of you go see him when he was here? Okay, Ray Stevens came here, he could not land at the Macon Airport. He landed in Birmingham, they got a fifty-five-hundred-foot runway. So Mr. Greg sent a fellow over there from his, and picked him up, brought all of his equipment over here. And he had two performances, when he got through, he had to take all his stuff and go back to Birmingham. Before he left his jet plane. So man, guess what? They can come in, try without any problem, insurance covers them with a fifty-five-hundred-foot runway, so, I mean, a five-thousand-foot runway, so we're, you know, we're okay now. So that five-thousand-foot, we can accommodate anybody who wants to land here in plane. So we, we just excited about, you know, the future of our airport, we keep, we give our time, we give, we don't charge anything for our meetings. And all of our, all of our efforts that we put forth is free graduate. So, and we're happy to do it, because I'm, I'm working for a few generations, I could have many, but it will have a few generations.
I'd also like to say, you know, there are a lot of traffic that comes into the airport, and I mean, is aware of, there are a lot of planes that pass over this area that will land in Macon and just buy fuel to go on to where they're going. So the airport is actually used a lot more than what people think it is, it's not just airport, not airplanes, it's base down. It's airplanes that's coming from other places that will stop there and buy fuel, and they go on to where they're going. Or just stop to rest a little bit, I've been out there many a times, where they can stop and see if that part of Curtis, Curtis car up there, to go eat, get us something for lunch, and we come back, buy fuel there, and they go somewhere else. There are a lot of traffic that happens out there, the people, it's not even aware of. Our airport is being used a lot, and sometimes people should go out there, people make counter destructors, sometimes just look, I mean, ramp is full of jets and, you know, engines and same engines, probably.
We got a lot of engines, Mr. Chairman, you use our airport right now. Caterpillar used to have to fly out to call Jordan, and they had sends them out there, they'd call me just about once every, every month, six weeks, they'd say, "When are we gonna start again? We need to use that airport for our jet, corporate jet, huh?" So Mr. Phil Ray, he uses it heavily. He's got over six hundred and four, he's chair of Macon County. And that's, that airport is a tremendous tool, an asset for him, because he travels, some of his people travel all over the United States.
It was chairman before the extension, he had to go.
He had to go, right. And then we have, Dan Rogers, he was here earlier, but he had to leave, he, he has, has a.
Buoy tech.
Buoy tech here, only fifty employees, and he uses it all the time, about every day. So it's a tremendous asset, it's had a lot of direct, it has a direct impact, indirect impact rather than on Macon County and surrounding counties. Jackson in particular, Quaver, so it's, I think it's, it's not a cost to the county, let me emphasize that, it's not a cost to the county. It's an investment for the future generation of this county to have jobs that they can stay here at home when they get out of school.
Another little known fact that people might not realize, we would not have mama helicopter sitting over on the fan, Angel Medical Center today, we did not have Macon Airport. Has that been a benefit to this community? Absolutely. Don't get it. Mr. Chairman, I haven't said anything, because the four of you know, and most of those people know, I'm the liaison of this group, I see this group at work every month. So I, I wanted you to, to interface, because I interfaced with you, and we'd had this discussion, in fact, we had it just the other day. And so I, I can't echo enough, sometimes people look at economic development, and they say, "Well, where's all the jobs you brought in?" Sometimes you gotta look at it as, "Where's all the jobs you didn't lose?" And, and I think the extension on that airport, the improvement on that airport will help us to hang, the first step, when I went to, I went to county commissioner's school, I broke off into that EDC thing, I went over there, and the first thing they said is, "The first step of economic development is hang on to what you got. Then you can go out and get more." And I think that airport is a key factor, and I don't know how you put a number on that, Mr. Gregor, I really don't know. You can't put a number on it until the business leaves. Then you put a number on it, but then the cows already out the barn, and you're closing the gate behind them, and that's not what we want to have happen here. And so I'd just like to say, on behalf of this group of people, I've watched them work now for three years. If you came out there, you would be impressed. It is, it is one of the most determined, one of the most terrifically organized groups under the leadership of Mr. Gregor, but also the members of the board. They, they do what I'd like to think that we do, they work together to try to make that airport as good as it can be. I am fully aware, I'm probably the cheapest man in this county, and I'm fully aware of what you're asking for. But I spent twenty-five years of my adult life driving three-hundred-foot-long steel tubes through the ocean at four-hundred feet. And they asked us one time, I asked some admiral one time, I said, "Sir," I said, "Why do you need a submarine with a carrier battle group?" I said, "We're a very expensive asset, why do you need us?" And he said, "You're a force multiplier." And I said, "What's that?" He says, "We can take you and send you places that we can't reach, and we can make you do things that expands our ability to carry out warfare." Factor of ten is a pretty good multiplier on the money that this county is investing, and I can't agree anymore with Mr. Gregor than I do, that it is an investment in the future of this county. It is an investment in the airport, but it's a, but it's a ten-o multiplier for that. I mean, let's don't lose sight of that, we are putting in one ten, multiply that by ten, that's the total value of the grant. That's an impressive multiplier, and, and so for that reason, gentlemen, I would encourage you, as this comes up to the.
Two more questions about wheels, this one.
Soon as, soon as weather permits. If y'all, if you all say today, or can I ask you a time, that we're gonna, we're gonna fund the county match on this project? If we, as soon as the weather permits, this guy gets his, gets his plant fired up, getting going, going up, we're gonna start the project.
My last question on the B S, we've talked about jobs, finish.
It'll be a progression as we, as we.
What I'm getting at, that's going to be in this year's budget, just being a gentleman.
With this. It'll be added into expenditure in this year's operating budget for a match and project, that will be, that'll be added to this year's budget for all of this state. It will be reflected in, I don't know how long the timeframe is on complete project, if they complete between now and June third, if all finished this fiscal year. But since it's a big project, it's probably gonna be a month a year, it may carry over into average July first, in that case, discount projects, we all pass forward, it will be separate from general fund budget. And it will carry over from this fiscal year and include for part of the next fiscal year. So it depends on the timeframe, but realistically, it'll probably be the last part of this fiscal year, and the first part of next, before it's finalized.
Move what I've seen this year, I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll say.
Yeah, we have a motion in second to match with local money in the amount of, so we'll have a total.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. For whose county?
Out of the, and they've made a move out, Mr. Hammond, is that part of your motion?
Say it's low, two, two-hundred and one.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-four.
Can you second that, out of that?
Absolutely.
We have a motion in second to match with local funds, the grant mentioned by our authority, any discussion?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rhodes, thank you.
Again, a discussion. I'll pay with a motion to say aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I can assure you that our authority right on here, all the rest is here.
Wait a minute, I don't want to make a motion out of it.
Should we get right now?
We're gonna, we're gonna take a short recess, about ten or twelve minutes, and.
Thank you again.
You call me back to order, I hope everybody had a good break. Improvements to Small Business Development Center, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, we had quite a bit of luck, I think, or success here in the last few months, getting clients located. But in our Small Business Development Center, otherwise known as the incubator and industrial park. One unit we had out there, Unit D, we had quite a bit of emergency management stuff, so we had cars, lots of generators, car seats, et cetera. And we've gotten that moved out, Tommy has a client, and that's one of the items on the agenda, you might want to consider that at the same time, right behind this, because the client is willing to. Wants to go into that space, in order to, in order to use it, we need to, leave us a payment there in, brought the ceiling down like we did on the Unit E, redo the floor and repaint it. We'll try to do, we can do most of the stuff except for the, except for the heat pump and so forth, with our own staff, in-house staff. But we have to buy the materials, and we have to come travel some way to the even there, so, Steve Lever, it feels like we can renovate that five thousand square feet in there in our neighborhood. And we can renovate that space and use it, for this client, have future clients, for about ten thousand dollars, and so we will need appropriation, or approve that, renovate that space. Make it available to a client who wants to live in out there, and it will probably make us, I'm gonna say, probably a very poor type base, to get it completed. But that, I think that old, that old side of the building will be renovated for Small Business Development, and it will be set out for also. Working quickly to help them find, mostly the long-term location, which could free up space across the hall, or we could, we have some other, maybe cars about usually at the center, so I think. An increase in activity out there, and we need to make space that would be used. I would do that, and I would just bring it up, they would be there, that'd be it, so that's all we're basically asking for. Asking that the board approve that, that we, that we should have, I think, ten thousand dollars, I intend to say, in the project. That would be the maximum amount we could do for less than that, we certainly will. Our rent is really, really low, because of primary purposes, to get businesses in, create jobs, and so right now, we're leasing out two hundred square foot, this is pretty low.
Mr. Chairman, you want to go ahead and talk about the lease, because without the lease, we don't need to do renovations, so I think you're, you're going to speak to the lease too, Tommy?
Yeah.
Yes, let's do that. We'll move, I believe that's, is it, a, we'll move that up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Basically, I think you've done this several times before in the past few months. It's a tick board document, and part number one is a resolution to say things. It declares property as surplus property that enables commissioners to enter into the lease agreement. And then it also, also gives the chairman of the authority execute this. So the company we do have is a small company called Innovative Energy Solutions. They've developed a coating to help mitigate transmission of bacteria. In other words, they spray medical facilities and medical equipment, it's been coated, and it kills the bacteria, and it can tear it, it's encased. So they're started, they're really excited with this process, they anticipate two, four, two, two.
Two more new jobs.
And of course, you know, the whole idea behind this development center, which we have in Frank City, and at the end of the year, we re-apply late, and hopefully, that ground will have to let it live on, and they've got some ideas.
James, before this board action, it entertains motion in connection with this matter, I guess we need to also fill in the amount of rent that is not in that right.
And at two dollars, that would be a hundred and fifty dollars.
And we likewise need to fill in the like with respect to the nature of the tenant's business.
The nature of the tenant's business, maybe stay out, application.
Is he back?
Probably something like that, actually. I guess bacteria, removing code, how about that? I guess bacteria remove encutted, how about that?
We'll point out that the leases, this is for a year at a time, right in the first year startup, we'll take another look.
Yeah, the, the two dollars of food.
I can adjust what is necessary.
And, um, finance, uh, director here pointed out a top strap layer that I made on the lease. I'm still in the year two thousand and eleven, in the opening period, I didn't need change that, take that off.
I'm sorry, it's wrong, it's wrong.
No, I got it right down, down lower.
You gotta write it to the board, Mr. James. Tommy, I just think it's, uh, it's good to see this incubator. When Jack Gordon, he said he went on the job back in Lake County. He and I had a agreement which was going out, uh, in the original letter, going out for the incubator. And that was one of the, Jack Gordon told me, this thing should be brought back to you, and what he intended to do. And, uh, and you tell me, the county manager, it's not only made that one of the parts, it's become one of the parts, it's working. So, we appreciate what you've done, that you've done more than Jack Gordon. I just wanna say that I was, when you said that, it's been forgotten, we never could work on it, and it's appreciated.
And sometimes it takes a hard time to think that you said to be relentless. And, and once, once you feel some sadness, it seems like, uh, word of mouth gets around, and somebody says, "Well, that may be a viable way," and so, somebody else... And so, we got, once we got the train started, it looks like we got a good opportunity for additional people to be interested in growing this.
How does this business sound like it's on the ground floor, so this could turn into your fate? If it grows, they found state, look.
Yeah, sorry, I had that discussion with you. We want you to stay at Lake County, Admiral, and board.
So, they grow, they grow with employees and size of their contracts, and all that, they pay to keep that business here.
Yes, well, just because of the nature of that business you described, I've got to ask the question, and I know Chester has already... And I've read the paragraph on environmental matters, uh... You know, with the nature of that business, do they...
They're not going to be manufacturing that inside, they'll be delivering to the side, and distributed.
So, this is their distribution, this is their base of operation.
Yes. So, it's just a, it's, it's, yeah, they come and seal containers, and they take the containers to whatever job they're gonna do.
Chester would have several longer discussions with me, if it would have to do with being manufactured.
Well, I, I wasn't quite sure.
You have a question?
Yeah. A motion. Okay, we have a motion at the, and that's to approve the lease and the declared and the resolution of the rest of the council. And the amount, as well as the purpose and the change in that. Did you second all that? We have a motion in second. Any discussion?
Just a question, clarification, we had two documents there.
Correct.
Now, one of us, the declaration surplus now, and this to approve the lease, you need to do that in two separate motions to the council?
Well, actually, it's, it's one resolution that does both of those, and the second document is actually the lease that's being...
It's referred to.
And I did ask...
So, then we need to, then we need to separate that from the actual plus appropriation, and then separate the...
Oh, yes.
This is the motion to approve the resolution and to approve the lease.
Correct.
Any, you know, any discussion about that?
On paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we authorize the county manager and his agency, if necessary, to approve. And not exceed ten thousand dollars in renovation cost to accommodate, uh, this new tenant in our incubator facility.
From contentious.
From contentious.
And also, we have a motion at the second, in discussion. Uh, just glad Tommy, this is gonna create two full jobs in the future, uh, past with more, it's gonna be...
Every job, every job.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Every job, great.
About another job between that fifty and there.
Any other discussion on the motion? On paper, motion, see if we're about to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Tommy, we, we, we report, we report, we, 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 we...
One of them have to be fine.
Uh, just, just while you're on that subject, Mr. Chairman, we've asked, I've asked the Jenkins, if you would, do a, uh, economic development, uh, report for you. Uh, anticipating that we end this meeting on Saturday, uh, for mid-year review. We'd like to bring him back to you, Mr. Chairman, on Saturday, and bring you up to date on all the various economic development activities that he and the D C have involved in. I think this will be very helpful to, uh, new commissioners as well as other commissioners.
Nothing new, absolutely, we're committed to faith.
Let me mention, Inspector, the Alan Terry report that he makes, uh, more urgent, some very big matters.
I just forgot to mention the baskets. I'll maybe more, Gregory more, it would be my...
Okay, so Tommy will see you Saturday. We know what time he's gonna be.
He's gonna go to Tommy.
Six-thirty, say.
We see him.
I like my job, I'll do that.
Okay, thanks, Tommy, we'll see you, uh, Saturday. Uh, I M F is the approval of the Sheriff's Department office space. I think Jack has that, uh, information, I think there was your Ritter here.
Yes, Sheriff, Tom Ritter, our, uh, coffee drinker is here tonight, uh, collecting coffee.
Yeah.
We give him our coffee, you can get a real good place on our connect. But, uh, the, the building that the county recently purchased down in Florida, in town here on the corner, here in that avenue. County walked twenty-nine and two, like, three hundred thousand dollars several weeks ago. Two-thirds of that building is, uh, is incomplete, and the goal was to try to bring all the sheriff's offices into one location. To prevent them from having to continue to rent the office space and so forth. We made some adjustments in there, Tom put together some plans. We looked at those commission bills, incidentally, trust, that's kind of helped, helped us, uh, as far as, uh, capital costs. We were also, uh, with, um, Steve Leffler, our, uh, director of buildings and grounds. And his staff were able to do much of the work that needs to be done on this, on this area. And so, what we hoped to do is convert, uh, the rest of that building to office space. Primarily used by the sheriff's office, bring all his, uh, main central offices into one location. Which will be more convenient, and eliminate the need for, uh, rental of those properties. And also, along with that, we'll see that one area on that building, renovation, we include a new space where the, uh, private life office. Private life office right now located in the business development center. We'd like to move them out, so we can make space for another business in that, in that space. Uh, bottom, uh, the building is on the left-hand, on the left-hand unit, first floor.
Oh, future ten.
Uh, first floor on the, uh, left-hand side of the building. There was a gallon, uh, right at a thousand square feet in that one unit, which is basically as much, if not a little bit more space than they're using now. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Ritter put together a plan, and I'll let him take the time and discuss it. And also, ask the sheriff, who's worked with explosive to open these plans, any comments that he might have. And then, I guess, the bottom line is, we need, as the board is willing to proceed with renovation of the buildings, we'll need appropriation. The paper, that cost estimated fee, neighborhood of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. As the board approves renovation project and plans, we might have that coming up as any other.
Jack, does that, uh, finally please announce for office furniture, et cetera?
That, that does include a lot of furniture. I don't think, because we, we're able to use, uh, a lot of furniture we already have. And we, we do have some in stock, we may have to end up with, uh, buying some. So, talk to chief deputies, who ran a lot, this was the sheriff, and also, just working with...
Lieutenant Brian Luke.
Lieutenant Leffler's working with them all that. So, we're basically taking the floor plan, find out what, what furniture we have, what we're going to place, what we're lacking. And then, uh, what we'll do is try to hold down expenses as much as we can, so that it doesn't cost a full hundred fifty thousand dollars that we have left over. We do need some additional furniture.
We know we repeat, I told Robbie, it would, we're gonna make one thing in terms of, to me, the second issue.
Yeah, I, I don't think furnishing's gonna be, uh, unrealistic. I think we'll be able to handle that, and I think most of that will come from existing furniture that we already have.
Well, I think, most of us have been over to this territory. We saw the, you know, the, the people working and standing up to each other, so... And, of course, I, my relationship has been, goes back a lot of ways, and before it was even a foreclosure. But I've met with Mike about finishing it, hold up the part of this. And I tell you, the contractor goes, and does it, it's just like, our, our maintenance department, Jim, can say this, I don't know how much, when, at Hudson Library. At the senior citizens, uh, renovating, the, the EMS building, which was more than capable of doing the work. And, uh, and, uh...
Also prisons.
And the prison, yeah, they're painting, they're, they're painting. And, uh, it looks a lot better.
Instead of the yellow building, now it's gray in there.
You got two spots, you have to paint.
We're getting there.
And you noticed on the question, I, I, you paint everything around the outside, leave the middle part for that.
But we weren't bringing attention to some things that Tom and I, and Jack, and Robbie talked about since beginning. If you look, Tom, show them the walkway.
Well, if you're familiar with the building, there's two ends, it's, it basically is six bays, three bays in the ground floor, three bays in the second floor. The first and second floors, the center bay, have been redeveloped. These are wrong. One of the things that you get in this building, it's a two-story building with no elevator, has no access to the second floor of the stairwell. So, one of the things, on an existing building, in order to put a real elevator in, you've got to have thirteen-foot of clearance from the upper floor level to the underside of an elevator shaft. So, that requires some cost. So, what we have, the advantage is on the north side, and the EMS building, where it built, there's, we can create rich, that will come in from great, uh, back there into the second floor of this building. So, that will give the ownership of the county, uh, can get access to that second floor. And it also applies to actions, if somebody needs to come see the sheriff, they can get in there, sheriff doesn't necessarily have to come down to it.
But more important than that, it'd be nice to park the Robby. A lot of, a lot of Robbie's folks can now park up that, that, only MS station, and use the walkway to come into the building.
Uh, somewhat, yes.
Well, there's also, there's certainly the parking lots to the, on the other side, that is getting utilized.
That's a town. And you got, uh, what, eight, what pieces of furniture?
Of the current, of this building?
Right in front of it.
Of this building? Oh, there's, of course, yeah, it's eighteen. Um, eight, nine across the bay, and then, out on the street, so, yeah. But the other, I think about is, even the way this was developed in the middle, what we planned so far, does very little to that. Some of the areas, we're, we're not modifying, is there, other than really sound insulating, some of the offices, but the obviously need to have some protection, we don't know what's happening. There's nothing in here that's extraordinary, there's nothing in here that's state-of-the-art, there's nothing in here that the county staff cannot do, have done many, many times before. And, and it actually works off quite a lot.
Little bit of bread, though, I'm glad.
The, the, the main reasons for this is the handicap accessible, instead of using the elevator. Because back here, you, you already have EMS, dispatch and all parking back here. That'd end up eliminating two parking spots.
That you can access the second floor, and take your parking.
Correct, without, without installing an elevator, not, uh, about eighty thousand dollars.
Hey, I was just saying, why is that doing?
Here?
The roof, five feet, right now, so, what's he just saying? The difficulty is not just the eighty thousand dollars to get there, it's the penetration through an existing roof structure. Modifying the roof trusses, and then re-flashing, and trying to get weather protect, all of that, and then you have to penetrate it after that. It, it wasn't expected to happen. In order to locate that public elevator, you'd have to be in the center of the building. Well, that doesn't need yourself for any security or any privacy from the general public coming in there. They have to get in the middle of a secure space, you know, get the elevator, you get upstairs. So, this actually works out really sweetly.
And how many, Robbie, do you expect to be working here during...
They'll be nineteen of boys, over, I mean, and that's including the three S B agents that have worked with us as well.
And that also allows for a separation from the private life, as long as in a hearing room, that they would be required to have. And it would be...
Their own access.
Their own access, which will not affect, uh, the rest of the building, but not breach in security of the sheriff's office.
The only thing that we've done is taken, there's a, there's a dual window out front, office glass, that we have to separate. So, if that stairwell, currently goes up to the second floor, that may become part of the sheriff's office space, and it becomes isolated. But we get a D M V that will go here, they have their existing door, it's there, they got a back door, they have everything they would need, you know, to get on the stairs.
And we did have this discussion, that later on, it may be used down the road, if there's never an admission to the jail, you know, that's like the original plans. And this becomes back to the county, it may be used down the road, if the county don't need it. The layout, Tom, I think Tom would agree, it makes you very self-proclaimed.
Right, and, and subdivisible, we've, on the upper level, we've actually penetrated two walls, so that I can come up this stairwell, and get from this space.
There's nothing load-bearing that Tom has dropped on.
And you can walk all the way across to the top floor.
Not the top floor.
Not the top.
Right, right.
And there's no law, load-bearing laws that Tom has put in here. I mean, somebody could come in here and, and basically redo the whole thing, like, Tom.
What would, uh, what the renovations cost?
Well, I priced that, uh, for the thing, and I forget the number, but, but the appraisal process, but it was, it was a whole lot closer to three hundred thousand, it was. Of course, I'm the lord of the hand.
Chairman, would you expect this to finish?
Uh, we'll, we'll expect to have it completed by, before the end of this fiscal year, so it begins July first, if it... Uh, and, uh, our, our maintenance staff, but they do have a lot of other possibilities.
You just gave them another.
I was gonna sign, we, we got them assigned a lot of good places now.
We keep, keep, keep them busy on renovation and projects, and we do have, they, they do have the rest of the county to take care of, so it takes a little longer sometimes. Uh, we feel pretty confident that we can get this done before the fiscal year, uh, preparation.
But the main thing, because it's very qualified, uh, we need to take the manage, and I think, I think, commit to take, and all of it, just look over Hudson Library.
I start to think you do that.
I guess, uh, to that.
Just as a reminder, I think Jack and I had this conversation, I had, uh, I imagine Jack, such time as the county chose for some additional money in this building. Would be my recommendation, which is, uh, your title insurance, uh, your title insurance. So, the company did, uh, make a commitment to do that once we chose.
I think the other point to make is, uh, the big cost of building, the cost of renovation, we're making this building one-hundred percent used with a market mile, which still will be the best money invested by the county. That, uh, would actually work on the building. I'm not sure how much.
Yeah, and they were actually looking for something from our tax office in, in, in the way of appraisal.
Yeah, the appraisal, the tax office already, or what kind of, that's exactly what it's hoping.
The appraisal, originally, I think, we make the tax office seven hundred thousand, all of them have four-fifty in it. But the appraisal was seven hundred, we did not complete, we did not really, certainly, a hundred million dollars, which...
Sheriff and love that, uh, that all of us is, be able to have it. And we've already talked about moving on to the jail, too. And we'll be able to come to you at some point. Look, Matt, that is, at this time, we get this project finished, this one, we have, uh, but why?
It'll, it'll take all of our staff that we have to be able to do, like, we won't have additional space.
Right.
Um, but, but the currently number of staff that we have, it will house our staff.
We get Amy help, right?
And getting my chief W.
Twenty-five years of service, he gets an honor.
Yeah, that's right.
Was that more than a year of work?
I think the other, the other thing to mention, the sheriff will probably mention this too, but, uh, uh, that's gonna free up some space in the current, uh, the current sheriff's office. And, uh, if you use it for some additional.
We're really excited about that, because we have no place to do any of our training, have our classes of any kind. And so, we're actually gonna be able to make our, where the deputies, the patrol officers are, every one of you have been there, the senior patrol officer. Those two, those four spots will come out, two of those spots will move to, um, uh, where the investigators used to be in the sheriff's office. And, and then that'll open that whole spot up, which will be about as big as from where I... And, and then that'll open that whole spot up, which would be about as big as from where I'm staying, to that wall of this size, room to be able to have, maybe a little bit longer, but, uh, actual classrooms that, where when we do our training, we'll have actual space, we don't have to go to EMS or DSS or the health department or the slaughterhouse to have training, we can do it all there at the office.
We'll even have room to store the schematics for the control unit.
There you go.
Also, your evidence room, we don't have that much space?
Uh, no, um, we've, we've had a little bit of a change since we've all talked about our evidence room, um, but, but we're, we're, we're working on, on that now. Um, DMV took our evidence room, that's where our evidence room is going to be, and now we're, we're working on another location for our evidence room.
Okay. But it will be very limited, I expect.
Absolutely.
But when we finish, when we finish this project, I think that's, and our place is, we will have evidence.
Absolutely. It is deepening that, but this is, we're very excited about this, and anticipating some nice meeting to know. Because we've changed three or four times, locations of where my staff has been located over the last several years, so it's going to be nice to know that we have a similar location. That we can call, call ours until they do that on the sheriff's office. And that'll happen, something will happen, you know, someday. No time soon will that need to happen, once this is approved.
Amy, where are you at? Great position for us, bud?
No.
This is the sheriff's office, your recommendation. We have worked, uh, built the elements plan, and we've done a great job, along with sheriffs and sheriff department. I think it's a good investment, we make a taxpayer dollar, and it's really needing our sheriff department. I mean, uh, this will be telling in there, uh, missing most of the drug control units, and brother investigations, highway everyone, uh, it's needed, and if you ever want to be known, they come with the general, it's, uh, we're going to make it easier for others for it all. And I put in a form of motion, we approve the budgets that's out there, the county management will ahead with renovations as soon as possible. And, uh, and also authorize the county attorney to go ahead and adjust title insurance as needed to determine which we can.
We have motion in the second of the discussion. If not, if you're prepared, please, you can say aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for your plagues.
Mr. Sheriff. Yes, exactly. All right, Bearfield building elevator.
Mr. Sheriff, uh, and, uh, Mr. Ritter's also been working with us on this, if you recall, it's been by the Bearfield, it was, I used to call it the old post office. And we got, it's the old, old post office, I guess, now it's on Bearfield. Uh, and there's been a, so there's been a, uh, on base, sort of a base for an elevator out there for a year or two. Uh, trying to get an elevator put in, or make that handicap accessible to y'all, or where, we started doing some renovation of that building a while back. Which means moving our nine-one-one dispatch center from the basement to the top floor. And our ins, our staff have, excuse me, doing, doing that renovation, it's, it's getting pretty close to being complete up there. I'd like to report, take a look at it sometime. The problem we have here is that that top floor needs to be handicapped accessible. The original plan, county had, was to put in a one-floor chairlift type elevator, accessible from the outside of the building. And they had figured it would cost somewhere around fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars. And when we started looking at it, and we actually have the elevator, county purchased it about a year ago, and actually made a delivery of this about twelve fifty-five dollars. The company we bought from was willing to give us credit against the new elevator, for its proposal, we're going to discuss tonight. But in, in looking at getting access to that elevator from the outside, we had built a series of ramps, which would take up most of that open space, we're going to add that building as a dual resort. And it costs about forty-five thousand dollars. And so forty-five thousand dollars for the ramps, and fifty, sixty thousand dollars for the one-floor elevator, we looked, and I think it's a better way to do this. And so we had the, uh, by the way, come out, uh, our building is spacious floors, and, uh, and some folks take a look at it and said, well, well, that building really needs an elevator that goes from the basement to the top floor. It needs to be accessible from the inside of the building instead of the outside. So we asked them to give us a quote, we have an intergen package, we have a quote from, uh, actual elevator, we have to put an elevator in, house, house, outside elevator. I mean, it would actually be accessible from the inside, and we go from the basement to the main floor, all the way to the top floor, access on three doors, cost of the elevator would be sixty-eight thousand dollars. Off the building, the, uh, uh, the shaft, I guess, or whatever you call it, uh, uh, around it, uh, we have a, we have a quote, we have one quote, twenty-eight thousand dollars, we may need to get one more. It looks like now that we can go ahead and put an elevator in, in there, that will service that building from now on. That's handy, it'll make the entire building handicapped accessible, it'll be accessed from the inside, uh, it costs just under a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and, uh, I, I think the building is, is really solid, we can't put some money in promoting emergency services, our veterans office, uh, our central dispatch, central brand that building, it's a good location for a lot of our communities, it's a good position in there. And, uh, it looks to be, and we talked about it, it looks like it'd be a better investment, we can't go ahead and put an elevator, have it's three soft three doors, uh, with the accessibility. To spending a hundred thousand dollars instead of spending seventy or eighty thousand dollars for an elevator, it's all built on floor, access from the outside with a series of ramps. And so our recommendation is to, uh, allow us to go ahead and appropriate funding, make a hundred thousand dollars to do this project. We'd also like to, if we have money left in the renovation, nine-one-one funds that are not going to be used for this project, to do correct some of those funds back for the elevator project, if we can do that. Also, we get amount, depends on the amount of credit we can get back from, uh, the company for the elevator, the chairlift elevator, the county already purchased. Uh, then it looks like that we'll be well within, well within a hundred thousand dollars. And I think if the building, if it does some elevator work in the past, then he can probably tell us if, uh, if this is a reasonable.
And they is elevating the reinstated portion of that, sure. Same or two, yes, one more stop, but, and, uh, I don't see how to give you such, let me talk about actually elevator. But it's, uh, this is good price, uh, and more important than the price is, you gotta remember that our nine-one-one people out in that basement, had there been a water break, I'm sorry, they, you know, it could have been a disaster, it could have been totally disastrous. And, uh, if you've ever been to the nine, if I've ever been to the nine-one-one center where it's located now, see what these people work, the conditions they work in, uh, then that's enough to satisfy me. But I think it's a, I think for the, for the prices you have, which turn especially from ice elevator, um, and the twenty-eight, the twenty-eight, the block and the brick, is that, as Tom can tell you, this elevator, it's led us a whole lot more than just building, straight block law, going through it. So, uh, I think that price, if it's, is it three stops inland, inland three stops?
Yeah.
Including the bottom, the bottom two.
Yeah.
Elevators come in, come in different bases, uh, you don't want to go so high on each base of the elevator.
They're adjustable, but the, the previous concept could not, could not travel from floor one to floor two, two blocks. It's an old building, it's got very tall floor, floor next to it, first floor and second floor. Hence the reason we had to build up outside, because we couldn't get from the second floor all the way down to the first floor. So if we could go as far as we could, we had to build up on the outside, hence the reason for that crazy ramp, to make that accessible. Truly, we walk out from the first floor of this building, down a ramp, off a ramp, zigzag, 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 into this chairlift, to get up to the second floor. Not going to have to, that is a four hundred pound chairlift. This is a twenty-five hundred pound elevator, O E A, it's stretchable capacity and everything else, so Android meeting that third floor, this comes down, and we get those stops. They do have limitations, if you get to a two or a three stop elevator, you get much more flexibility in terms of traveling.
Did we ever decide, have we going to enter the, enter the elevator?
Or, this is inside. This can go the whole distance, so there's in, inside on the first floor.
Where's the handicap person want to come in for that elevator?
They come in through the front door.
Got that handicap round through the front door, or around the hall?
Where, where they hit the emergency services director's office, it used to be.
Then.
Uh, that will be an elevator lobby, but we moved him on the other side of the lobby to another office that we created over there, so where David's office has been, I wonder if he stood up a desk in there or not, but, uh, that would be a small elevator lobby, there's access on the main floor, that's that on, on the place floor, you'll access it next to the bathroom down there. And on the third floor, you'll access, access it directly into the hallway.
And by code, you know, in this state, a little code, if you put people in there to work, especially from the ADA compliance, and the new ADA compliance, you still have access. As Kevin came up, that's how, church work we do. We have our locked upstairs, you've got to have, you don't have access to that third floor, you've got to have exactly the same control panel downstairs, so a handicap person has access to it. And this is one, one job David did, that you very well could, when you didn't have a handicap person.
The other thing that you can also realize is that, you know, it just never needed ownership.
But if you remember, it's got this bomb ship crew, we did.
But keeping that and making all three floors more accessible, that building, I believe, just has to be all ship, it's a, it's a, it's a very mobile.
So what we're talking about is an elevator that's going to flip into the lobby, to the, to the panel?
No, just the elevator, the remodel work is done already, we've done the budget, we have no additional money for that. You'll notice that you go by, all the windows have been, right, the boxes have been taken out, cleaned, painted stripped, repainted, put back in, built, so it's going to look, it's going to look really good when they get that finished. The rest of the renovation work on the inside, uh, is covered out, but some other additional nine-one-one money that we have. And what we'd like to do is, we could get out of money supplemental to the, the budget, but we'd like to use that, so use the county money, but we need a budget, a hundred thousand dollars to restart the project. And, uh, and what credit we get off the old chairlift elevator, go for this as well, any additional nine-one-one money that we might have, once we complete this very renovation, but the nine-one-one center up there, for all intents and purposes, been completed, except for the foot, which is going to process and get bid out, right now, any current work on something. But those are all of the costs that were identified, the nine-one-one companies that were worried back to the county, so, so there's no additional cost for renovation of the building. That's covered, the only additional cost we're talking about here is the cost of actually putting down there.
The other piece of scope work that we did have, and I believe it's in the numbers that I talked to, redoing those front steps. They are uneven in terms of risers, and it doesn't give you a hard enough landing in the front, so it's basically taking those out and redoing those, so that you get an accessible, flat level landing, required by the ADA, and then having the step there. That was another piece of that project, to readjust those front steps.
And we do have a lot of, of, uh, veterans who come in, use that back, there are songs on the first floor. And they can get to it now, but, but even renovation to the front of that building on the landing, can make that even easier for them to get in and out, especially if someone's in there.
What are the plans for that?
Uh, well, we moved our nine-one-one sign-making operation down in there now, where the day reviews will be, and we'll probably work out that some, as you said, and, uh, we're going to use a lot of that basement for storage, there's a load dock in the back of that building, and maybe just come into that building, bring it in offload, basement, you have an elevator, bring it up to the first floor, all the way to the, to the country. So, uh, there may be some open spaces free up down there to use for other emergency services or storage. Right now, I think the dispatch is looking for, been able to see some daylight, they were putting down the basement about thirty years ago, and they're, they're, they're having, they're having to change some of that, so.
It's just amazing, first time we walked in, I clearly have one major one, what they, they, they have to.
And we actually, we have a minor water break every time it rains, really, really hard. Um, the front steps that we're going to redo, has a, has a malfunction in, in where it connects to the, to the building itself, and we do get a little water leak, leak in some situations, but it's not enough to damage any equipment.
It's built like, this thing, Tom, this, this is built, this is the start, this was the bomb, built there, when everything had, this was out.
Yeah, if you're downtown, and you get an air, air strike, go ahead to that building.
Can you go, go go for it?
Go, go close off, that's the site you go in town.
I don't know, it's pretty sure, it would be safe.
But, uh, that's something that's gone, we've been calling that a long time, David is just, uh, different step, Dr. Roger, they haven't had a chance to go by. I know Christopher Duffler's had a chance to go by the new EMS base over, uh, next.
It's impressive, too. I think I'm probably the last one to get to go see it, but I, because David, his folks taking me around, it's, it's.
I like to have some time, sometimes either before a meeting, or sometimes in the next month or so, and that would be very helpful, for them to go take a look at the new EMS facility. Uh, it's not the kind of thing we'd have an open house for, but I think you can see where your money's going to be. It's in where our county boys have done, plus on the bay for when you have these, or the ambulances out there. And also take a look at Bearfield renovations that have been done, you can see that, uh, as someone mentioned earlier, our maintenance staff, they're saving the United, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in all the projects that were in there over the last couple of years. And what they're going to do is, they're actually going to make that building, off the next, I think, thirty years, and, and, and if you don't want to, don't want to sell it, you're really going to have to have an elevator in there for twenty minutes, or begin to bed, right? So our recommendation, Mr. Sheriff, is, uh, is going to do that, I also made appropriation, foundation, they've got some town, so they'll do my thousand dollars, so we'll do, wait for the elevator renovation, and do the Bearfield.
We have a motion in the second of the discussion.
Let us have one quick, David, you know, one of the premises of moving EMS station, that's our response time, David. We're on, we're in your position, and that's one of the things that I've got to address. I know you've not been there a short time, and I don't know, you've got part of a, end of the summer, but have you seen your response time improve and cause to look at?
Just, just the time getting out on Main Street has been an improvement, um, as you know, we're in works with, uh, DOT, it's working with that stoplight out there. Even during the Christmas holiday season, we didn't see any, any, uh, traffic, so it's just work out there, but.
We do have, uh, Dees still working on getting our approval from state DOT in order to.
He is refiguring his being.
So that's still an option, but right now, David, I asked you the same question, uh, with the, uh, with that, the problem out there, and, uh, with the, uh, you have, uh, shit handles come up out of the lights on, unnecessary sire, lights on, people have, that's, you give it by the way, they're going pretty good back there.
But where's that Walmart leaving?
That's going to change the dynamics a lot.
Yeah, thanks, but of course, we don't know what's going to go back in this place, so.
Any other discussion?
Bring your report back, make a paper.
All right, there's no other discussion, uh, all the favorite motions signed about to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion answered.
Mr. Chairman, Wood, assistant, Ritter is here, he's also working on our, uh, his, uh, his, uh, renovation out there, for that, if there's any, just going to register, I don't think he's got, he's got a set of plans.
They're done, I did not bring those.
Those are done, y'all already appropriated money to cover that, but that's on its way, uh.
Just to give you an update, we met with Jennifer Caffey, this was the national report, uh, she came back with comments right around Thursday, so, we had a six-inch offset on the old building, not to renew it. Uh, she asked if it was possible to increase that a little bit, to try and make it more obvious that the addition was an addition. Uh, I was able to make that eighteen inches instead of six, uh, without really impacting the functionality of what we had there. She told us that it's, in essence, it's a no-brainer, it's no longer to become a registered building, it, it's just a matter of what we do, and what we make of it. There wasn't a thing in there, the only other comment she had had was she would love to see a window or two into the newish. Well, as part of what we're doing is we're removing two windows that are currently on an exterior wall, two. Well, as part of what we're doing is we're removing two windows that are currently on an exterior wall, to create pass from the old into the new. We're gonna try to take those two windows, reframe them to fit in the exterior wall. So we obviously are taking every piece of what we got in there, um, looking to jack up the floor, it's very, very easy to do, it's new construction, it's a scam, and some of the stuff that's there. Uh, it should level the whole place, and it should actually, quite useful, and quite nice. She was very happy, and we had, and truly had, no question, her comments were issues, the name is, we're trying to. Thank you, Tom. Okay, we have time, I have to, uh, two, six, ten, eight, for elevation, most of what regarding, avoid bridge.
Mr. Chairman, you want to have the time of the letter, you should go to work on this, and you probably.
We're sorry, man, I'll go with it.
I can give you a bunch of more detail on this than I can, but that's, that's a project that's been under consideration, providing I would look back, DOT, they do want to, uh, come to compromise based on what the board has requested us to do. And you may want to, to go to next, next recommendations on a few weeks, because of what their proposal is, but uh, I won't read the letter, everybody's had.
Everybody's had a chance to read the letter, and here, here's what we would like. If you remember, if you're good with numbers and you remember back, that hundred twenty-six looks like about half of what it would really cost to tear that bridge. Looks like DOT, they said we're gonna split it, and that is probably not a bad deal. We talked to DOT, looks like maintenance on that bridge, comp in for that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's no more than eight, ten thousand dollars a year, once it's brought up to, to the dead end stand. So that means that you would have fifteen years, probably, uh, you know, just out of that hundred twenty-six thousand. I want, I wanted two things, and the reason I, I need to get your concurrence on this, because we, I need your concurrence, or we need your concurrence, but we can go back. Two things I would like to get DOT to agree with. Yeah, we'll take the hundred twenty-six, but when the bridge comes to the county, it is full up, refurbished and painted, and ready to go as pedestrian bridge. We're getting a full up round, we're not getting something that immediately after we get it, we have to send twenty-five thousand dollars into to get it up to standard. I want it up to standard, would be my proposal, to have it up to standard before it ever comes to us. Second thing is I would like for them to tell me, uh, in writing, that they have made the decision, and DOT, they've been dancing around it. And I want them to, to tell me in writing that they've made the decision that they will not refurbish that bridge for traffic. Uh, it's my belief that they have made that decision, but they have never come out and said that in writing, and I'd like to have that in writing before we enter into an agreement to take that bridge over. Uh, I, I, I think that my constituents up in Calwe would want that, they deserve that, uh, they, they have waited now for almost three years for.
You're saying that, that a choice would not be, that we're gonna remake the bridge for vehicular traffic?
I want, I want DOT to tell me in writing that they will not refurbish that bridge for vehicular traffic.
So the choice is tear it down?
Tear it down, or save it and walk across it, ride bikes across it. That, that, that's where, that's where I think we are. But that's just my opinion from the discussions I've had, I mean, Jack was in the same situation. That's what I believe, but I would like for them to tell me, before I say, yeah, this is the way we want to go, I, I'd like for them to tell me.
I think, uh, Commissioner Covers' point is very important to consider, uh, once a road is open, it's open, closing, there's a process that, um. And I would, I would add to your point is that if there's anything that needs to be done to close it, they need, or I, I take care of it. Uh, otherwise, you're gonna inherit a bridge, and you're going to have to.
Exactly, and that, that's outstanding. That they would have to establish a ballards or something. Yeah, I, I want the ballards, I, I want everything done, but I want them to, if we enter into this agreement, gentlemen, my, my recommendation to you, after three years, would be that they turn that bridge over to us completely. Upgraded, refurbished, painted, ballards in place, signage if necessary, uh, so that we're getting a full up round. If they're not willing to do that, then I definitely want to know in writing that they're not willing to entertain keeping that bridge open for vehicular.
I blame Mr. Covers, that, and this is pretty much the caveats that, that Mr. Covers described, that we suggested to him at the public hearing.
It is exactly what we suggested.
We also suggested location of the new bridge, which I understand they have also pretty much breached, I believe they have. And so, uh, this is what, we think it ties along with the historical district, that, uh, a lot of this being preserved, we're talking about the Calley School, and how important that is to this community and, and the county. And, uh, with the land trust involvement, and the Rhythm Store, you have the Calley Mounds, this is just part of the historical district that we're gonna need to be preserved. And, uh.
And that's what, guys, that's what I'm trying, I mean, a- at the end of the day, I, I wanna know that, that, that we did everything we could to try to preserve the bridge, because I believe that's what my constituents want. I know there are, I know there are people who can, and it would be great if, if the bridge could be maintained or prevented from traffic. I have not heard, seen, seen a definitive decision from DOT that they had made that call, but in all my discussions with them, that's what I come away with. The manager may have different discussions, but in all my discussions with DOT personnel, we had served down for a while, it just appears to me that they, they are not. They, they, they're gonna make that decision. I want them to tell us in writing that they're not gonna do it. I want them to tell my constituents, and I, I think they owe that to the people in Calwe. And, and, and that's, that's what I'm saying, if the answer is, well, yeah, they would, but, then let's entertain that. But I can't really go back to them without your concurrence. We've reached the point now where they've made us an offer, and, and with the caveats that, that the attorney has placed on, which I think are great. We'd love to have a concurrence.
If we, we might get it in shape to where it is just a pedestrian type bridge.
Pedestrian and bicycle.
And, and that would be your obligation to maintain it after.
After it's already in that form?
After it's in that form.
Now, we don't, we don't need to move it, we just need to consent.
What we need is, we've got the letter from Brian Burge, who's a professional construction engineer, and, um, they're expecting, um, some kind of response from the county, as to whether you're, that, that offer, if they optimize over, and if they can make any adjustments to it, so. Or what you're covering, saying, you want the county to respond, or, or agree with that, provided, I would want a pushing assignment, you know, to make that bridge vehicular traffic. Number two, you want to bring it up here, put pedestrian use. Number three, give us a hundred and six thousand dollars after, this is, if that can be.
You remember three or four, you will close, you will take all access necessary to close that road.
That's, that's what we're asking, because I guess what we're saying is, the board is, is, is in agreement with Mr. Covers' suggestion, uh, and we will draft the letter, whatever points, and return it to Mr. Burge, soon.
I think, Mr. Covers, if you request also, that we'd like to put this on the gym at the RPO week on the twenty-third, for immediate with those folks, that all these, or so.
Right, we need, if we get our concurrence, we can get the letter.
I think we just need it, in, uh, consensus.
I just want to make sure, if, if I remember shaking her head.
You got me, bud.
Good enough, I'm happy.
Thank you, very much.
All right. Very good, for them, very, very, very Calwe school, Calwe school. General, the Calley School, as you remember, uh, I guess, Mr. Covers and I were always on the board at that time, uh, we entered into agreement with the school board, attempted agreement that once school had ceased being a school, that that would revert back to the county. There are some legal work to be done on that, uh, could revert back to the county, we think that that, that will happen, and it's going to happen. In preparation for that, we're assuming that after that first of July, uh, we're hoping that the new school will be prepared and just no longer be a school. In preparation for that, uh, there are some things that we need to start working on. Uh, one being, uh, to have a business plan, uh, for this, to get started, if there's any grant money's available, we'll have to have a business plan for it, we will have the grant money to be available. And there are some that's available, but you've really got to have all your eyes, all your teeth probed, to be available for that grant money. Uh, in lieu of that, uh, the land trust, which has invested interest in this community, of course, with the Rhythm Store and other properties that we're seeing, has agreed to assist us, uh, with that. By paying basically half of the cost, uh, out of their, that was some grant money they have, in assisting us with a, with a business plan, uh, which is six thousand dollars. Uh, I think if you went out and tried to hire consultants, and went out, you'll find that that's a pretty good, pretty good deal, to have, have a business that we can live for. Also, generally, we would ask that, uh, we appropriate some money for some things that the county's gonna have to start doing, uh, along that same line, which would include a new survey, uh, and some other, and some other things that the county attorney may have to, uh, in preparation of to do. That would be an additional six thousand. We've been working with the partner with the EDC, the EDC has agreed in principle, that they think it's certainly a, a good idea to move forward. So it would be a six thousand dollar outlay from the county, and, uh, just may not interrupt places, right, a six thousand dollar outlay from the EDC.
Well, if there's been amendment to the EDC, but if there's amendment out of EDC, which more, we could, we could actually have an, we should, we should do that one, I'll check, and permission for, uh, things that are falling under this category or type. One of the best, Mr. Jenkins, when it comes to the EDC budget, most of the county commission budget, that he up for, make those things, and so we can do it either way. But, but I would like that, if you're agrees to do this, we can pay those preliminary, have those preliminary expenses, like the first bill, mention survey, environmental stuff, climate surge, uh, uh, any other legal matters that we need to be. More to actually, effectively transfer property from the school board to the county. County attorney, some of the mayor, but he knows where it's, and loops, and we're gonna have to jump through it, going now and then, building, and property, and other transfer to the county, until the new building is built, hopefully by this summer. But we need to go ahead and start the preliminary work now, and hopefully be able to do the transfer, but, uh, the school is very open, Board of Education passed a resolution back, we're gonna, we're gonna transfer that to the county, for a dollar. We may have some legal problems that county attorney will address, but, uh, their intent is to make it use, usable as a community center, and a cultural or historical center, or a resource center. For all the people that live there, I don't think the county administration will, so they have a real desire on the Board of Education, or to see that work, and county's opposition, make that happen. So, but we need some money to pay for that. The other thing that you can build, mention, unless you want to continue to write checks to the bank, pay it, you need some, you want to fit partners and, and plan to help raise money, to help pay the yearly expenses on that. And that's why you need to put together a business plan, including all the people who are actually, in, in, in using this building, and participating in this building, to help generate additional funds, instead of just, uh, uh, county, uh, expenses. So with a business plan, and being able to generate support from all agencies that will be involved in it, we're hoping to put business plan together, without helping around the county, cooperate, expenses, etc.
And I would add, just to give a more, for example, in our last meeting, we had the walk, kitchen service was there, back kitchen, and we've heard how the, of course, Advantage West has a kitchen where people can come in and, and market their goods out of the kitchen. And, uh, uh, Mr. Corbin and myself and the county manager had a meeting this week with superintendent, and, uh, Chinese school board talked about some of these things in county, and we were told the kitchen was basically packed. So that's North County State University, who, who, uh, we can't guarantee anything, but they started seeing inclusion, Mr. Covers, about, uh, uh, being a part of that down there. And as has, uh, as has the, the tribe, so, uh, I think we do have some, we have some of this preliminary work, and some things, we've got to get some grant money, we've got to be ready to act. We've got to have, for this, for it to be sustainable in the future, I think it's, I think it's a wise investment, this is a very historical building, built by the WPA, and we, I think, if you ever look at the building.
I think it's the last operating school that was built by the Works Progress Administration.
That's right.
Phil's saying.
Yes, I did.
It was.
Yeah. So, uh, so that's, that's the question, gentlemen, that, uh, is, is that we go ahead and, and start some of this preliminary stuff, on this, on this building that, uh, that we've worked on for years to, to make it part, not just the county community, but just the county, the county. And, uh, you know, we've had, we've talked about the heritage, and, and we want to make it a place of destination, and, uh, and we'll make it, for it's economical, please. And the folks, the land trust who put, uh, who invested a lot of money in that area, we got the Calley Mounds, which was the largest trading center for turkey in the east coast, uh, just a little ways away, and up there for the bridge, and some other things, so. Mr. Chairman, you know, I think we can have a discussion, but I'd like to make a motion, that we go ahead and approve, uh, the six thousand dollars to begin the preliminary work, uh, as seen fit the county manager and county attorney to, uh, secure this, and county attorney to do the legal work. And also that we, you know, that we partner with the land trust on this business plan, uh, go out and get a business plan done, and anything, Mr. Commander, you can tell us what that, that one, that would really top us. And I think they have the capability and the personnel to do that, so I'd like to put that in form of a motion, and, uh, make some investment for, for the community and the county.
One clarification, that is a total of twelve thousand, I'm actually.
Yeah, just put, uh, sick will be, sick will be on the contract, that's the, and sick will be on the, uh, very exact mention.
Intangency or not?
Intangency.
Intangency. I'm all about, no one has to go.
Just my second, that way.
Being involved with the way it personally asked.
This is, this is the problem, we're gonna make.
Retain that, like.
I know that, uh, they got a gym down there, literally bought, and you try the little eggs, you know. Well, I think the gym's gonna be used for numerous things, I think you, what the, what the hope is, it'd be used for, uh, entertainments everywhere, but as far as I know, the recreation's gonna stay recreation.
As far as I know, and the game plan, uh, Mr. Jenkins, is if once those, once those trailers get out of that ball field.
That will become a recreation.
Absolutely, that would be run by Major County Brad.
And we have, and the fact is, we have another gyms now, this, this four size gym, it's took the pressure off, most of your schools is open, that sort of takes place, as you can see, KLSA is not being used, or Park DJ is not being used. But the same, we have, when we have a new four size gym, of course, you can practice two things before.
Yeah, they, uh, you hit the ceiling all along.
I just believe of using it, it's, it's, it's a lot of kids, I love, I explore kids, I use it, driving down there.
I've been out there, I've been out there with, uh, Seth Adams and Brett, we've walked it, we've got it, we've got the vision, we know where we want to go with it. We just gotta get the trailers out of there, so we get the grass growing again, and, and get what we want. And you can visualize it, I mean, that field can go all the way back to the bank.
It's a regulation sound song.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It has a full track, it, it.
It has a full.
It has a full walking track.
Yeah, yeah, and so, yeah, and that'll all come to, that'll all come through Major County Brad. But it would, we'll, we'll keep that property, absolutely.
But to make it feasible, and, and feasible in years ahead, uh, we're gonna have to have some partners, long-term partners, and, uh, that's what we, that's what we went after.
My own concern is bringing in partners, things like that, I, I want to stay true, I think, you know, it's a sale, so. I like the idea of what we're doing.
I agree. I agree with you. And that is the, it'll be a, it'll be a user thing, they'll, they'll be using it, so it would be, it would be.
They use it. Chester.
I'm not real familiar with the vision for the building, but it sounds like a good bit of this, gonna be a public purpose kind of situation, and I wanted caution to enter that business plan, that'd be very sensitive, that it must be.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, so that's, that's one of the. Some things we have to understand that, that have really, SEC is very into, into the pottery down there, we have the kitchen entrance.
Education.
The Eastern Band has a very, has a very strong end, we have the, the charity quilters, and some other people from around the county. Uh, have some very, you know, some display and old things from Southern Appalachian, uh, you know, I don't. southern Appalachian, uh, you know, I don't know about fine wick counts, but-
Well, some agree, that is a lot, a lot like it.
Yeah, and, and, uh-
A motion should be made.
And it's also our hope, that we can, now, just both do that, and, and, Richard Pepper and I both have worked hard, and we'll continue to do so, that, that we can combine a lot of these historical groups inside of our county, and we can all pull it in one direction. There's been a lot of ideas floating, we think this is feasible, we have the building, uh, we'll have a plan, uh, so, we have had conversations with those folks, they seem to be very open to working with us and working together, as, as it's starting to come together. Uh, there's several different historical groups out, out in the county, and, uh, we all want the same thing, that's to preserve and enhance the heritage, and we're working on it.
Senator.
We understand. Can you get a discussion on the motion? All papers, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You go, go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Kay is the school softball budget process, we're part of their capital out money, becoming student school, Jack, I talked to him, and Jack, who is, um, the softball field, the middle school backs up against, what is that, is that Clark Chapel though, that, that comes down, I guess that would be on the west end field. That, that fence and that, uh, backstop, I guess, running compromise, quite a bit of that, full shape, and, uh, we've got an upcoming softball season, it's going to be upon a, with a budget season, I guess, as you say, to be fair, uh, and they have gotten some estimates on that work, I think Ronnie, LBJ, Joffe, were, agreed to do the work on that?
It's a, it's a combined, it's a combined effort of volunteer labor, LBJ, and, uh, as well as folks, it's a, it's a community effort to get this done at a, at a very cut rate price, I think if you, the others, that, that school, uh, assembled previous, cost us, for twenty thousand.
About twenty thousand. When you're talking about the, the backstops, brick, that structure behind the backstop, the fencing, and this, basically, safety issue to keep all of the world into the highway, and what's happened, uh, and now they, it's huge for K E purposes out there now, but softball season coming down, you have foul balls that go back, and without the teacher, the coach, they can stop kids running across the road, you have the foul balls and cars, and it's just, it's, it's not a good situation. So, Ronnie and I felt like it was something we should, go ahead and bring to you and, take care of this, uh, I guess, before we budget process or take care of this directly, if you would, for a business case, on that, that contract, do this one, do this one.
Well, yes, we, we would do, we would do this contingent upon, upon the role of the board of education.
We, we agreed on it in our liaison meeting, and both were going back to the respective boards to agree that this amount can be set aside, and we're, the board of education, if we agree with that, they're going to agree with twenty-third?
I believe that's what it's-
Whatever they, whatever agreement they have. They will do the, yes.
Yeah.
The county can just write a check, but-
For the business case.
And they would have, this, and again, it, it would, this is really an addition to their capital out money, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We mostly are proper, concerned about the safety issue, and, and, we're up there, no kids, study, and cars, and-
I think what, what spurred this is, is there've been a couple situations where kids volunteer, get in my cars, and it's, it's just, if, if we wait and do that this fall, there's going to be another softball season, or something gets killed, you know, and, and we've been given the knowledge of this, and so Ronnie and I felt like it was something we could, we could better go do it, and I think Chester's a great one, we should do this, so, Ron and I would recommend that transfer be, you know, if it's up to nine?
It'd be eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five hundred dollars, and this is for materials only, they have all the labor secured, uh, to the parents of, of softball, and LBJ, uh, which has been, which is partnered, partnered all over the county, and do it, then, um, LBJ has really come back to be community oriented, so, uh, that's why I would, so.
So, interest in safety and, and cost, most, as I said, most of the twenty thousand dollar job, we'd get that for eighty-five hundred, so, I would have made a motion that we have to-
It's about one-third, it's actually about one-third, but obviously, yeah, that's why I'd be in our, on, you know.
And the fact that we'd get it done now before the busy season is on, so, I would have made a motion that we, uh, appropriate that as a business.
It's like a contingency or not, but-
Yeah, uh, well, we'll keep on about, we're making projects-
After what we've done tonight, we've got about sixty-six thousand left in contingency, is that why?
And that's in our budget.
Yeah, we better hold on to that, because we, we still got six months to go on this year, so, we're not spending anything else out of that.
So, we're still, we're still within our, we're still within our budget.
So, this, we're still within the budget, but we, we don't like to spend everything in the contingency we don't have.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make a motion that, that, uh, that we would approve eighty-five hundred dollars for materials, uh, all agreement with the school board, uh, that we, that we work, we need to volunteer and, and LBJ to complete the product on safety, and put that to softball field to do upgrades, but that's money.
Okay, so we have a safety statement?
This, this, for, this, for, sex discussion, clarification purposes, if we do it, since this is an idea brought, it's, it's taken on by the school, county shares your money board, and we'll take it on by balance, we will not take it on by balance, and increase their capital out money, let's call it eighty-five hundred dollars, I think they'd pay that, I believe, eighty-five hundred.
Yeah, I'll look.
That's what I was watching.
Could I ask a question about that while we got it up here for discussion, just, just because we get a couple of church, how much do they have left in their capital?
They, uh, actually have-
They checked off all the, all the projects that they asked for, and it's all gone?
The, the projects, how about the budget this year, for the schools, just, just for clarification purposes, or outline specifically, for items to be spent, and they have to be spent on those specific items that were approved in the budget, those capital out money items, any deviation from that, that's going to come before the county manager.
And there has been no deviation, you guys are the liaison, there's been no hint that maybe something's going somewhere, or staying, they've managed, they've stayed on, wasn't-
If you've got, if you've got three minutes, I'll run to my desk, I asked for that.
Not asked for, not granted, and I got it, and I've got it on my desk, and it's, I believe it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars, right?
Yeah. But the orders were in there, everything was either done, or it said in progress.
Did anything come in under budget?
That it was two hundred fifty.
No. They're basically-
I'm just, you see where I'm coming from, I mean, I, I'm just saying, we've already given them, we're talking about moving, like, into, into it, and I'm happy to do that, I think it's, we got, it's a no-brainer, it's going to be done, my question is, if anything came in under budget, I'd have to move eighty-five hundred dollars, I might be able to move four thousand dollars, I hate to be cheap, but that's what they're making.
Well, you can certainly ask that question.
I'd love to ask that question, and if there is nothing, you know, if, if, I'm, I'm for it, okay, I'm telling you, if we got to go eighty-five hundred, I'll go eighty-five hundred, but if anything came in under budget-
Do you remember the bus you was in there?
Oh, I know, I know.
Uh, orders were in there, and it was a set price, and it's-
That's exactly right, and if everything is right, if, if everything's right where it's supposed to be, then, then, then that's perfect.
He, he gave me, I asked for that, he gave me a budget that balances, if you feel, yeah.
Basically, the way that-
Some of those things-
Right, that's the right answer to the question, but yeah, right, I got it.
Some of those things were in progress, so they're, they had not been completed.
Exactly, and, and obviously, if they're not going to be completed, we're not going to go ahead and do this anyway, I, I'm not going to hold this up, for that, all I would like to know is, the parts that have been completed, have they gone for exactly what they said that, or is there some money there?
We don't know.
What Mr. Chairman, what we can do is, we're going to have a liaison meeting, I believe, the last week, this month-
Twenty-something, I believe, but-
And we will certainly, uh, we will certainly ask for that, but-
That being the case, I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and contingent upon that, just-
Just so you know, we did, we did ask that question, I do have a copy that, like I said, there's about, I would say, six or seven items on there that say in progress.
All I can say is, you got it, experience tells me you got to really look hard at what they've actually spent.
This, this, this process might help some, uh, I think if you do it this way, you had to do, you had to do the capital out money, and they don't need to spend it, and you don't actually release that money, but, 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 but,[1264.52]